I'd like to call this meeting to order, the August 5th, 2025, meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. Will the clerk please call?
Supervisor D'Surpa. Present.
Cummings.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Koenig.
Here.
And Hernandez.
Here. I'd like to see if any of the board members would like to dedicate today's moment of silence. We have.
Chair. Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt. We've detected a minor technological issue that we need to resolve prior to continuing. Thank you.
Okay. I didn't turn this way, but did you guys have somebody? Okay.
I became.
That can.
Yeah, Jim and Justin. Sorry, folks, we're having some technical difficulties here.
Chair, we're ready to resume.
We'll start with Supervisor Cummings and then Supervisor D'Surpa for the moment of silence.
Thank you, Chair. First moment of silence I'd like to dedicate today is to Stephen Camille Haji, also known as Reeve. If you ever spent time in Midtown, you probably recognized the guy who always had the tan and rarely had a shirt on. Known as the mayor of Midtown, Reeve came to Santa Cruz in 1978 to surf and to do construction. As a landlord, he provided affordable housing for 35 years, making sure people, regardless of means, could have a roof over their head. Known for his creativity, generosity, and joy for life, on Christmas, he always played Rad Santa, riding a red scooter in Santa, in a Santa suit, passing out gifts for everyone and helped to support the Brady's Yacht Club Christmas toy drive. He also was a big supporter of many fundraisers for local nonprofits, and most recently, his family expressed interest in working with the city and the county to expand on one of their properties to convert it into transitional housing for people experiencing homelessness. In his younger years, Reeve was an avid surfer who sponsored the first ever women's professional big wave surfing event. He raised a daughter who was a pioneer female big wave surfer. His family and friends loved Reeve, a sentimental, honest man that loved and lived life to the fullest. Thank you, Reeve. The next moment of silence I would like to dedicate is to John Michael Ozzy Osbourne. In a career stretching across six decades, Ozzy Osbourne became a star with Black Sabbath in 1970s, launched a hugely successful solo career in the 1980s, turned himself into a heavy metal entrepreneur in the 90s with his traveling Ozfest Rock Festival, and in 2002 became an unlikely but wildly successful reality TV star, thanks to the MTV show The Osbournes. Ozzy's music touched hundreds of millions of fans throughout the world, across generations, and through the music he created with so many others, helped to inspire so many to play and create music in ways that revolutionized rock and roll forever. On July 5th, 2025, Ozzy played his final show with the original members of Black Sabbath and many other groups to honor and celebrate the legacy of Ozzy, Black Sabbath, and their many fans. This show is the highest grossing charity concert ever, raising $190 million, which was donated to the charities Cure Parkinson's, Birmingham Children's Hospital, and Acorn Children's Hospice. Ozzy passed away on July 22nd, 2025, at the age of 76, but his spirit and music will continue to inspire many for generations to come. Long live heavy metal, long live rock and roll, and long live Ozzy Osbourne.
Supervisor D'Surpa.
Thank you. I'd like to dedicate a moment of silence to Father Jerry McCormick. Father McCormick was ordained in Carmel when the Diocese of Monterey was newly put into place. He served at Assumption Church in Paharo and Holy Cross as a parish priest there, and he was very beloved in the Monterey and Santa Cruz area. One of the things that I particularly, he was a very good family friend, and one of the things that I loved about him is he loved dogs, because dog is God spelled backwards, and he always had a dog on the dais with him. His dog Maya had a 49ers jacket that was specially made for her, and she was a rottweiler, and she would ascend up to the dais wearing her 49er jacket, and he was just very approachable and a beautiful human being, a beautiful priest, so thank you.
Thank you for that moment of silence. And I never thought we'd mention Ozzy Osbourne here on the dais, but that was my favorite band in middle school, so let's share the moment of silence. Thank you. Will please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, from the nation under God, in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the Assistant CEO, Nicole Corburn, if we have any late additions or deletions to the regular or the consent agenda.
Yes, Chair, we have a revision to the regular agenda. Staff requested that item 12 be deleted from the agenda, and the item is packet pages 859 through 882.
Releasing officer. Okay, that's it. Now we'll move on to, wait a minute. I'd like to see if any of the board members like to remove any items like you said.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to remove item 17, the SB9 ordinance. Chair, where would you like that placed? Would you like to hear that first, or would you like to hear it at the end?
First, probably.
Okay, so we'll make that item 6.1.
Six point, item 17.
And I'd also like to remove item 25. Regarding AB 1416. We'll make that 6.2.
Yes. Okay, now I'd like to open it up for public comment. This is opportunity for members to speak to us regarding items that are not on the agenda, items on the consent agenda. If you'd like to speak to us regarding an item on the regular agenda, please note you'll not be able to speak when the time comes for that item to be heard. You have two minutes.
Yeah, good morning. My name is James Ewing Whitman. I read yesterday that there's going to be an event happening in Watsonville where a bunch of peace officers and other emergency responders are going to be doing something for youth. The gentleman, the deputy that's usually here, did a cool video on it. I'd like to thank him personally. So many interesting things going on. I mean, where did the debacle and the end of the United States really end? You know, these corporate flags, all these coins were minted before, 1891, we used to have a dual metal standard, and then one of the first things Rockefeller did to defraud the wealth in the United States was to move it to the gold standard, and that silver value lost like 20 to 25%. People went bankrupt overnight. You know, I don't stand up to the pledge of allegiance to the corporate maritime pirate flag. Got a bunch of these copies of the city managers. These individuals that were elected are not supporting the people because they've signed confidentiality agreements. Truly kind of sad, at least in the city of Capitola, it's finally gotten some attention. I guess an individual didn't like being referred to as Dolores Umbridge. You know, communicating with my mother, I was trying to explain to her that somebody's got to do it, so might as well be me. Kind of made an error, or they did a self-correcting. I'll read this. I'm totally thankful that this has happened finally, as I'm going to be on the Valley in 2028 for that reason and many others. Thanks for asking, and I had to correct that ballot 2028. Anyway, our Declaration of Independence is really kind of powerful. Wow, the two minutes went fast. It's just really entertaining that people are remembering people who practiced a lot of mind control, controlled by Travis Doc, MK Ultra, many of the Hollywood spectacles, such as the one member today. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alex Miller, and I live in Aptos. I oppose the placement of lithium battery electric storage systems in residential neighborhoods, next to schools and next to hospitals. I think that an industrial setting is more appropriate. Assemblymember Dawn Addis proposed in AB 303 that there be setbacks of 3,200 feet for best installations larger than 200 megawatt hours. I propose that a proportional scale be added to that, that a facility half that size be 1,600 feet, and one quarter that size be 800 feet away from sensitive receptors, and sensitive receptors are people, hospitals, schools, nursing facilities, et cetera. The argument against that from the best industry is that in the event of an incident at a best facility, only one module might combust. And I understand the technical reason why that would be highly improbable for more than one module, but I want to point to history. In 2010, there was a virus that was introduced to the uranium centrifuges in Iran that caused a failure of over 1,000 centrifuges to combust, and this was done through cyberterrorism. To date, I'm aware of two cyberterrorism attempts at best facilities. They were stopped, but you know, our enemies get clever and cleverer, and we have to consider that a worst-case incident involves the entire facility. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Hello, good morning. I'm Gregory Audino. I live in Amesti. I hope that everyone is having a wonderful summer. We at Stop Lithium Best and SantaCruz.org have been working to get the word out about the plan at 90 Minto Road. To date, there are people who live right there in the neighborhood of Minto Road who have not heard a word about this plan. A 200 to 300-megawatt grid-scale best facility right in the middle of farm and berry fields, close to nine schools, one-plus mile from the fairgrounds, and right next to thousands of homes with good people who live right there. Let's not forget the riparian zones, the high water table, College Lake, that is part of the water reclamation project that cost millions to send water back to our agricultural fields. Why is New Leaf Energy the only developer on this project? How about hearing from other S-energy storage system companies who produce a product that doesn't fail in a thermal runaway incident, spreading toxins in a radius of two to five miles or more? We are living with the aftermath of a worst-case scenario with the first-gen best technology at Moss Landing. Let's not have another worst-case scenario with second-gen best tech when there are more options, better options, safe options. They are being utilized in upstate New York, four-to-eight-hour storage in kinetic systems. We need to explore better options. The best is going in for 20 years or more, and you expect an electrochemical battery won't fail? Please stop treating us and yourselves like guinea pigs. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to address this board. My name is Jim Cargill. I'm the president of the Wine Growers Association for the Santa Cruz Mountains. This is a role I've served for about eight years. You have before you a resolution to establish a wine business district for this area, and it's very important. The growers, winemakers, and farmers of this area broadly support this, and I'm here to represent that voice. I myself represent this. I'm a champion of the Santa Cruz Mountains, the tourism that it provides. When this wine industry provides the shiny objects and attraction for tourism dollars to bring people to Santa Cruz, we compete all over the world for recognition for the talent and the beautiful winemaking that this region has. And the establishment of this district will level up the playing field and allow us to compete on a worldwide level to gain the recognition and really let the world know who we are and where we're at. They say a rising tide raises all ships. We don't intend to raise a tide. We intend to raise the ocean and let the world know who we are, where we are, and bring those people in here. Thank you very much.
Hello, good morning. My name is Erica Costanzo, and I'm the Community Bridges WIC Regional Breastfeeding Liaison and the Chair of the Santa Cruz County Breastfeeding Coalition. I'm very happy to be here this morning, and I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for today's presentation of the proclamation of Breastfeeding Awareness Month in August. Each year in August, in more than 170 countries, breastfeeding awareness is celebrated with World Breastfeeding Week and Breastfeeding Awareness Month to encourage breastfeeding and protect the health of infants, children, and women around the world. And we are here today to help bring awareness to the importance of breastfeeding as a first step to lifelong health. Breastfeeding lays the foundation for better health outcomes for moms and their children, both in the short and long term, including the reduction of occurrence of many illnesses and chronic conditions. The theme for World Breastfeeding Week 2025 is prioritize breastfeeding, create sustainable support systems. And a big part of the work that we do in supporting lactation and breastfeeding families is to help create and sustain lactation accommodations in workplaces, in schools, and anywhere else in the community that they are needed so that families can continue to breastfeed when mothers return to work or school. It means a lot to the coalition that the board is recognizing August with this proclamation, and our work continues throughout the year to help support lactation and educate the community on the importance of breastfeeding. Our community and businesses can also help by supporting and investing in women and their decision to breastfeed in this important effort to improve health outcomes for our moms, children, and families. And I am grateful to be joined today by other members of the WIC program, Nursing Mothers Council, Santa Cruz County Department of Public Health, and Pretty Mama Breastfeeding, all of whom are actively involved in the work of the Santa Cruz County Breastfeeding Coalition. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Dana Wagner. I am the Director of the Community Bridges Women, Infants, and Children's Program, better known as WIC. On behalf of the more than 6,400 women, infants, and children WIC serves each month, I am here to thank the board for the proclamation declaring August as Breastfeeding Awareness Month. WIC works closely with the three hospitals in our county to help families get the support they need with breastfeeding education and support. We collaborate with the county and other organizations to ensure our most needy and vulnerable families start life with good nutrition, necessities, and the education that they need to thrive. Please join WIC for our 18th annual Health Fair and Breastfeeding Walk. This year, for the first time, we will be at Laurel Park next to London Nelson. It is this Thursday, August 7th, from 1:00 to 4:00, and we would be honored by your presence. Many thanks to the board, the county, and the city of Santa Cruz for working with us on our shared vision. I appreciate your time and support of working families. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Primavera Hernandez. I am the manager of the Children and Family Health Branch of the County Public Health Division Health Services Agency. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for proclaiming August as Breastfeeding/Chestfeeding Awareness Month in Santa Cruz County. Your continued advocacy for programs that support healthy mothers, fathers, and parents, and children will pave the road for healthy generations to come. With my remaining time, I'd like to start reading the proclamation, and my colleagues will continue behind me. So the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors proclamation proclaiming August 2025 as Breastfeeding/Chestfeeding Awareness Month in Santa Cruz County. Whereas breastfeeding/chestfeeding is one of the best public health measures, providing health benefits for mothers and birthing parents, infants, families, and societies, keeping mothers and birthing parents healthier throughout their lives and saving the lives of infants. And whereas breastfeeding/chestfeeding provides protective factors for both mother, birthing parent, and child, and is recognized to help prevent obesity. And whereas human milk is superior to any artificial milk substitute, providing children optimal brain development and an ideal foundation for early learning readiness. And whereas the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that infants be exclusively breastfed for six months before being introduced to complementary foods and to continue to breastfeed/chestfeed for at least two years. Thank you, and others will continue the proclamation.
Thank you for having us. I'm Raina Snyder from Nursing Mothers Council. I will continue with the proclamation. Whereas our local hospital, Sutter Maternity and Surgery Center, and Watsonville Community Hospital hold the prestigious Baby Friendly Hospital Distinction from national accrediting body, Baby Friendly USA. And whereas the Santa Cruz County Breastfeeding Coalition seeks ways to promote exclusive breastfeeding/chestfeeding for six months or more, increase community awareness of breastfeeding/chestfeeding importance. We create support for lactation accommodation in public and educate families and professionals about sources of lactation support. I'd like to also add that Nursing Mothers Council is the only nonprofit service that meets with families in homes for free, and we support families for breastfeeding and pumping if they're unable to breastfeed or chestfeed. And we grant and see families at all times whenever they're needed. Anyway, thank you so much for making this month happen.
Good morning. My name is Liz Chan, and I am the owner of Pretty Mama Breastfeeding, representing the Latino community and the multicultural communities that breastfeed Asians, Blacks, Indigenous, and others. The name of my business, Pretty Mama Breastfeeding, represents all that. I'm reading here, whereas Watsonville Community Hospital, Sutter Maternity Surgery Center, Dominican Hospital, Denny Health, Santa Cruz, Salud para la Gente, Santa Cruz County Nurse and Family Partnership, the Santa Cruz County Trauma and Foreign Approach Field Nursing, and the Community Bridges Women, Infant, and Children's WIC program maintain certified lactation consultants on staff to support new mothers and birthing parents. And whereas the Santa Cruz County Breastfeeding Coalition, Sutter Maternity and Surgery Center, Dominican Hospital, Denny Health, and Watsonville Community Hospital collaborate to host a donor human milk drive annually to support the most vulnerable babies with human milk. And whether that's the theme for this year, World Breastfeeding Week, a prioritize breastfeeding, create sustainable support systems, calling on community collaboration to support breastfeeding. Now, therefore, we, all of us, thank you, Felipe Hernandez, Chair of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaiming the month of August 2025 as Breastfeeding/Chestfeeding Awareness Month. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
Hi, good morning. My name is Carol Bjorn, and I wanted to thank the first two gentlemen who spoke about stopping the best facilities here in the county. I respectfully disagree on one point that putting them in an industrialized area would be safer. I completely disagree with that because we know for Moss Landing that plume of toxic chemicals can go anywhere. So I would like to ask for a complete moratorium on approving any best lithium facilities here in the county. Electric Power Research Institute is the research arm of the power industry, and it keeps a database of best failures. Their own data shows 91 failures since the first utility-scale best facility was installed 13 years ago. The majority of these failures have happened since 2021, which is an average of one failure per month. Okay? Further, according to the EPRI data, the average time to failure from 2020 to 2023 was 1.8 years. So why is the county even considering moving forward with a best lithium facility when these facilities are likely to fail within two years? And as mentioned many times, there are alternatives, sodium. Now, I just learned this week, vanadium is also a viable option. But getting back to this EPRI database, here's a short list of the long list in the EPRI database. Moss Landing on January 16th, Escondido, California, September 5th, 2024, Santa Ana Energy Storage Facility, July 17th, 2024, San Diego, Ote Mesa, May 15th, 2024, Kiri Mesa, April 29th, 2024, Terra Gen Best in Valley Center, California, September 18th, 2023. So literally, the list goes on and on. All these failures have resulted in evacuations and unknown cost to human life.
Good morning, Chair and Board. My name is Amy Peeler, and I am Chief of Health Center Services for the county, and I'm here to thank you for proclaiming this week as National Health Center Week. Every year, the Health Improvement Partnership of Santa Cruz County brings us together to organize around this celebration. Today's theme is patient appreciation. So thank you again for this proclamation. I won't read all of the wherases, but I would like to point out some particularly important ones. This year, we celebrate the 60th year of health centers in our nation. Health centers specifically are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring that patients are engaged in their healthcare decisions. There are more, the health centers nationally provide over 650,000 jobs for people. We are on the front lines of emerging healthcare issues. We provide access to our nation's veterans. We address the opioid epidemic, public health threats, as well as natural disasters. In Santa Cruz County, we're fortunate to have three federally qualified health centers, and they are the County of Santa Cruz Health Centers, Salud para la Gente, and Santa Cruz Community Health. And we do this work alongside our subcontractors and subrecipients, Dientes, Community Dental, and Janus Services, as well as many other partners that make up our safety net. And we're reminded as we see Planned Parenthood closing in Santa Cruz and ending some of their services, such as primary care, that we need to come closer together as a safety net to ensure that all of our communities get the care that they deserve. So thank you again for proclaiming this week National Health Center Week.
Good morning. My name is Kristen Glenn. I'm the Development Director at Dientes Community Dental Care, and I want to join Amy in thanking you for recognizing National Health Center Week. Your support means everything to the tens of thousands of residents at health centers serve here locally. Community health centers are the backbone of our healthcare safety net. We provide care to those who need it most, regardless of income, insurance status, or ability to pay. At Dientes, we're proud to serve as a unique part of the safety net as the county's largest dental provider. We understand that oral health is inseparable to overall health, and when we ensure someone can eat comfortably, speak clearly, and smile with confidence, we're not only taking care of their health, but we're also improving their quality of life. We're deeply grateful to partner with the county in so many meaningful ways, through core funding that helps us serve seniors, through our contracts with HSA, and also through collaboration with the COE and our Registered Apprenticeship Program. Your continued support helps sustain our work, and Dientes works with many of our safety net partners to ensure that Santa Cruz County remains a place where everyone can access healthcare that they deserve. Thank you for recognizing the vital role that community health centers play and for being a true partner in making our community healthier. Thanks.
Good morning, Supervisors. I am Terrence Kincanon. I'm the CEO for Visita Santa Cruz County, which is my passion and my absolute pleasure and honor to serve. I hadn't all longer walked than I've usually had coming here today because as Visita Santa Cruz County moved last week into our beautiful new offices in the McPherson Building, we are so happy and energized by our new surroundings, and we are deeply grateful to the County of Santa Cruz for their support in this endeavor. I appreciate the opportunity to address two issues today, specifically item one on the regular agenda, short-term. Specifically, item one on the regular agenda, short-term vacation rentals, and item 27 on the consent agenda, Santa Cruz County Wine Improvement District. Regarding the short-term vacation rentals, Visit Santa Cruz County is an organization which is funded by assessments by both hotels, motels, and resorts, as well as long-term, I'm sorry, short-term vacation rentals. The Board of Directors and the CEO of Visit Santa Cruz County have chosen not to take a position on this item, but we do expect that the county will operate it effectively and it, and with equity to among those who choose to have short-term vacation rentals. Regarding item 27, the Santa Cruz County Wine Improvement District, Visit Santa Cruz County fully supports the establishment of the Santa Cruz County Wine Improvement District. We believe it will be a valuable tool, tool to invest in and promote this growing wine region and will ultimately lead to overnight stays, bringing additional tourism revenue and tax revenues to the county. I would also be happy to take a role in this if, if needed, as I have been involved in the establishment of two business improvement districts in San, San Luis Obispo County, California, and Columbus, Ohio. So thank you for allowing me to speak and for all that you do for the residents and the businesses of Santa Cruz County.
My name is Gerald O'Brien. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I've been a 50-year resident of Santa Cruz County and of the local wine community, wine business. I'd like to speak about a subject near and dear to your heart, revenue. You folks require revenue to manage and pay the bills of Santa Cruz County. In order to help that revenue surplus source, you need taxation. And we in the wine business are prepared to help with that taxation, with generating wine that is, that helps to draw the tourists to Santa Cruz County, as well as the beautiful beaches and other facilities here. The wine is a big draw, and we in the wine business are requesting the approval of the Wine Improvement District Program because that will help us generate funds and revenue of our own to more widely generate interest, interest and promotion of the wine industry. So basically, it comes down to, if you help us by helping, by generating more income, we can help you by generating more income. Thank you.
Good morning, all. I'm Jay Rosella Myers, another 50-year resident of Santa Cruz County, and I just want to express my extreme appreciation to all of you on the board who are seriously considering the ramifications of these ion lithium batteries. There's been a lot of press in the local papers about the interest of the community, and we, as a group, actually had a public informational meeting on July 17th, which was very well-attended. A lot of people really want to know what's going on with all of this, and they don't want to have ion lithium catastrophes here in Santa Cruz County. And I really encourage everyone in the audience, and you guys especially, to attend the environmental panels that are going on with the three workshops. The third and final one is on August 27th, from five to eight, in these very chambers. And they are doing a great job of presenting both sides of the pros and cons of having storage batteries in general. And, and hopefully, you will at least get the information from those meetings because they're extremely informative, not just for the public, but also for the people who come and participate and listen. So thank you all for doing that, and I have some handouts about alternatives to lithium. Central Coast Community Energy has a list of long-duration flow battery projects. And one of the people at one of those environmental presentations represents that business. He's from San Francisco. I encourage you to really listen to the alternatives. Thank you.
Good morning, Board and Chairman Hernandez. My name is Anna Rizzo, and I'm the Director of Child Support Services for the County of Santa Cruz. I wanted to thank you this morning for the proclamation acknowledging August as Santa, I'm sorry, as Child Support Awareness Month. By helping to establish, modify, and enforce child support orders, our department is able to provide a crucial source of funding for children to help them meet their basic needs for items such as food, clothing, and housing. The child support program also promotes parental engagement and family well-being. Studies have shown that when parents are involved in the child support process, it leads to better outcomes for children, including improved academic performance and reduced risk of negative behaviors. I would also like to acknowledge the dedication and hard work of our local child support professionals within our county, who help the families navigate the program and system every day. Their dedication significantly contributes to the stability and well-being of the families in our community. So again, thank you to the Board for your acknowledgement and ongoing support of the important work that our department does within our community.
Very nice. Cool. Hi, I'm Tim Delaney again, and yes, I live on the Topaz Summit. Thank you very much for hearing me today. So anyways, I don't like having land and water and my food supply poisoned. And part of that stems because of how my parents went out of this world. And so that was a little, all that was a little unnerving for me. So that's one angle. Other angle is I, I really don't want to see American people and immigrants rounded up and treated like they're being treated, you know, over the last couple of months here with our new administration in the White House. Okay? So I want to remind everybody about some things here. What Karl Marx, we'll talk about that a little bit. Okay? Karl Marx, well, interesting, he's the root. And then you have the plant and the pod that's like Lenin, and out pops Hitler and Stalin. Notice one is right wing and one is left wing. Okay? So there's some good examples here. You have Pol Pot, left wing, Cambodia. You have Augusto Pinochet, right wing, okay, Chile. You have Joe Stalin, Russia, left wing, Hitler, right wing. Then you have some other interesting people. Muammar Gaddafi, Libya, that's interesting. Saddam, Iraq, Assad, Syria, that's Sunni and Shia. Okay? So you can have religious dictatorships. You can have all sorts of interesting dictatorships pop up, but they all have one thing, a few things here in common. They all establish their private armies. They create their private prison systems, and then they create a database. They create a list, and then the killing begins. So I'm a little unnerved with what Donald Trump is doing. I don't like it. Thank you very much. You have a fine day.
Good morning, all. I'm here today as a low-income disabled, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. I'm here today as a low-income disabled senior. I've lived in the area for 13 years, and I was sent by two different groups today. One, I need to emphasize that there are 253 low-income seniors in Santa Cruz County as of June. There's always been between 7% to 11% over the last two, two years of low-income seniors. The question is, is that acceptable? And I don't mean that as a rhetorical question. It is a real question. What percentage are we seeing is acceptable for people to not have care here? And I ask that from the perspective of, let me say, you know, I'm a commissioner, I'm an IHSS commission. When I was appointed to the commission, the gossip about me was that, quote, "All black people are lazy." And so she's probably facing her, faking her disability so she doesn't have to work. I'm the only active commissioner on the IHSS commission who has attended every meeting over the past year. I was told that all IHSS commissioners were not, are not interviewed by the Board of Supervisors. I was sent by one of the groups that I was sent today to talk to you about, asking you to please cherry pick the representatives for disabled, low-income seniors and disability people, the people that you are actually telling to represent you on the IHSS commission, so that we don't have those type of incidents again. This diverse group sent me to remind you that the IHSS commission represents you to the public. Okay, thank you.
Morning and welcome back. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I want to speak to item 32, the status of the blockchain-based digital wallet in this county. It was reported in the Sentinel, Santa Cruz Sentinel, that Sheriff Clark refused funding because he did not know what the government would do with the information. I propose to you that this blockchain digital wallet has the same problem, and I have asked you, as have many others, to please stop this because we don't know what Humble, who is doing this for free for the county, is doing with the information. I want to also ask you, as a member of the public, to please read the recent grand jury report, Human Trafficking in Santa Cruz County. It is shocking, and you all need to pay attention to this. It will come to you for response soon. I want to finally say that I, I want you to support AB434 by Assemblymember DeMayo, who would like to see a moratorium on lithium-ion battery energy storage systems in the state until the Santa, until the California State Fire Marshal upgrades, updates their best fire codes. I attended that symposium in Sacramento last week. This is a very serious matter, and our county, the state, needs to impose a moratorium on lithium-ion battery grid scale structures. I do not think that the Commission on the Environment's presenters are very balanced at all. And the last one, the representative from CESA, CESA, was at the symposium as a lobbyist for the battery industry. I ask that members of the public who have educated our Thank you. I apologize. Let me get this. I apologize to the Board of Supervisors because I'm not sure the procedures. But if I wish to comment on number eight regarding the Redman House, should I make a statement now?
No, you have to wait for item eight.
Oh, just wait for item.
Consent agenda.
Okay. Before I depart, as a retired teacher, I have to do this. With you questioning with the eye on things, my students are saying, Ms. Clayton, why don't you get an apartment near there? If you start blowing, we'll know they're dangerous. That's why I say, now, listen, unless you want to pay for the apartment or get me a discount, no, you'll just have to go through the scientific procedures and learn about them and study all the issues. That's part of being a participant in your society. And I apologize that I didn't study up on the Redman House sooner. So, okay, I'll wait till number eight. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring you, with that, I'll bring you back to the Board for any comments or questions. Oh. Any speakers online?
Yes, Chair, we have speakers online. Thirma, your microphone's now available.
Thank you. I have, my comments pertain to the best facilities that are being planned in Santa Cruz County. I want to emphasize that it's important that you get proper assessments for the worst-case scenario. And the worst-case scenario is the whole facility catching fire. And I get that they're going to say, oh, that's unlikely, but it's a possibility. So to ignore it is going to set you up for disaster and allow them to, people to get poisoned and sick. And the reason why I know this is I live near Moss Landing, not that close to it. I live a whole six miles away, but I was deeply affected by it. And I asked Chief Mendoza of the Fire Department about the response, the poor response and the lifting of the evacuation so early, and he said to me that they had the plume modeling, which was one stack burning for 30 minutes, and that was the best data they had, and they said they knew it was inadequate. Now, I want to emphasize, just because they had that inadequate data, they also had other data that was showing clearly that we were being poisoned. You could just look at the satellite images of where the plume was going and see that it went much further than what the plume modeling provided was. And that's why the county is now in legal lawsuits, being sued by the public. I also want to emphasize, the investigation is still ongoing for Moss Landing. So at the workshop, one of the so-called experts, who is actually a lobbyist for California Energy Storage Alliance, was quoting that it was a one-off, but he also was saying that the Escondido fire was a success in the sense that they didn't detect any pollutants. Well, guess what? I looked at the hazmat air quality data. They didn't even test for particulate matter or HF. So you can't even compare it to the Moss Landing fire because they didn't collect all the data. I'm still investigating it, and I will tell you guys more once I have more time. Thank you.
Janine, your microphone's now available.
Hello there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Janine Roth, and I'm with Santa Cruz YMB. I wanted to talk briefly about how the county's general plan and zoning code are set up. Right now, pretty much any significant land use change, even outside the coastal zone, gets treated as part of the local coastal program because the general plan and the LCP are pretty fully integrated. That setup creates a lot of confusion for both the public and the county staff, and it slows things down. Items like the ordinances on your consent agenda today have to wait for Coastal Commission sign-off because of how the code is structured. Other jurisdictions in Santa Cruz County and beyond handle it differently. They bifurcate their zoning code, which clearly separates what applies in the coastal zone from what applies inland. It gives them more flexibility and avoids the long back and forth over policies that aren't really relevant to inland areas. We'd like to see the county do the same, and in fact, your housing element includes program H3G, which looks at whether the LCP is a barrier to multifamily housing. That's a great opportunity. Updating the general plan and the zoning code to clearly distinguish coastal from inland regulations would streamline land use decisions and shorten timelines. So let's give the county more flexibility to meet its housing and climate goals. Thank you.
Diane, your microphone is now available. Diane, as a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself from a dial-in device.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you then. My name is Diane. I'm calling from Watsonville. And today I'm calling to express the concerns from our community and your community who are opposed to any lithium batteries in the battery energy storage sites being proposed in and around our neighborhood. This has been a primary request for seven months now, and none of the Board of Supervisors have motivated themselves to convene a non-biased technical panel to explore the scope of our concerns. That lithium batteries, because of their high flammability potential and their high toxicity level, are not and should not be chosen to be used in the industrial-sized, utility-scale situation that's being, being designed for 90 mento road. I'm very concerned that county personnel are allowing themselves to be guided by the very industry whose overarching outcome is profit. Why else would their message be anything but minimize risk and best-case scenarios? From researching and documenting real-life fallout from lithium battery fires in the battery energy storage sites, there's ample evidence opposing the industry's narrative. This is not a technology that people want to be exposed to and have to live next to or to become a sacrificial community for lithium battery energy storage in our county. You owe to the people of Santa Cruz County to demand a truly safe, non-flammable, non-toxic battery technology for any battery energy storage project in our county. There are alternative There are alternatives, and I hope that you will explore them. Thank you very much.
Well, and user one, your microphone's now available.
Marilyn Garrett, excuse me. There are many corporate toxic threats to our health, including nuclear. I want to honor the life of Dan Hirsch from Committee to Bridge the Gap, bridging the gap between nuclear dangers and a safe, sustainable future in their, in his CommitteeToBridgeTheGap.org and their twenty-fourteen annual report. He wrote an article, Diablo Canyon, Fukushima, on the California coast, question mark. The late, great environmentalist David Brower wants to find the term nuclear reactor as a complex technological device for locating earthquake faults in California, unquote. It seems whenever a nuclear plant was built in the state, major faults were thereafter discovered nearby. This was due largely to the failure of the nuclear industry, abetted by its captured regulators, to look seriously for such faults before construction. When subsequently found, they downplayed their significance. The Fukushima nuclear disaster resulted from an earthquake far larger than the plant had been designed to withstand. The Diablo Canyon Nuclear Plant with ten thousand times the long-lived radioactivity of the Hiroshima bomb, and tomorrow's the eightieth anniversary of the US dropping that bomb on Hiroshima. Sitting on the California coast is a Fukushima waiting to happen when it was designed and built PG&E gas and electric-
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the board, see if there's any comments or questions on the consent agenda. I'll start to my left.
Thank you, Chair. On item twenty-seven, the resolution of intention to establish the Santa Cruz Mountain Wine Improvement District, I just want to congratulate, uh, President Association, Association President Jim Cargill, thank you for coming out today, as well as Executive Director Kiki McKay. Uh, this is a great step in the right direction, I'm really happy to see this move forward. The Santa Cruz Mountains AVA has literally grown world-renowned wines. In fact, the Judgment of Paris in nineteen-seventy-six, uh, saw a Ridge Montebello that was grown in the Santa Cruz Mountains AVA win out over French wines and shocked the world, redefining what California wine could be. That happened here in our AVA, and I'm certain that a little bit more organization in establishing this district, which, in which wineries will, uh, vote to tax themselves and, and then do some promotion, uh, will, will ultimately rebenefits for our entire, uh, region. So, thanks, I'm very supportive of this. On item twenty-nine, approving the contract with Sandbar Solar for the Capitola Library, uh, this is just a fantastic project, and I mostly want to congratulate and thank the Friends of Capitola Library, who raised sufficient funds, uh, to put solar on the, on the Capitola Library. This is largely through sale of books, so the Capitola Mall. So imagine selling used books to raise, uh, nearly half a million dollars. That's hundreds of thousands of books, it's just a phenomenal effort, and it's going to lead to incredible, um, resiliency for the library. It'll save three, about thirty thousand dollars a year in annual energy savings, uh, and ensure that we have a climate-resilient public center for, for people throughout mid-county. And also really excited to see that, uh, Sandbar Solar won the contract, great local, uh, solar contractor, so we'll be keeping that money largely in our community. And finally, on items fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-five, ratifying contracts for storm damage repair on Miller Cut Off Road and Stetson Road. Just want to thank Public Works, uh, for these projects. I've already heard from many of the residents up there how relieved they are to see these projects done, especially as we enter, uh, particularly robust fire season. I know that having these roads, uh, the storm damage repaired and these roads, uh, fully accessible gives people a lot more assurance, uh, as we, as we enter into that risky time of year. So, thank you.
Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. Um, I'd like to start off just by thanking everybody who joined us this morning and took the time to come and speak to us. Um, we're always listening, and we always appreciate your comments, so please continue to stay engaged and involved. Um, I would like to celebrate and recognize National Health Center Week. Um, this is, as, as you heard earlier, an annual recognition of the importance of health centers in our community. This is truly the backbone of healthcare for those among us who are most vulnerable. And, um, given what our health network is facing in the coming year or two related to Medicaid cuts, it's more important than ever that we lift up the providers who are the safety net for our community. Um, I'm deeply concerned about the recent closure of Planned Parenthood Marmonte, the Santa Cruz Clinic. Um, that was a critical, um, link in our chain of, of safety net. And so I, um, appreciate the other health centers who are going to work together to make sure that folks don't fall through those cracks, but as a community, it's so important that we're, we are, um, continuing to support and lift up the providers of healthcare to those who, um, need it the most. So, congratulations on Health Center Week, and, and thank you for all of your good work. Um, I would also like to thank county staff, uh, for items both number forty-three and fifty-six. They're both deferral items, and one is an update on the Boulder Creek Water Quality and Recovery Project, and the other one is the report back on the Recovery Permit Center. These are both items that are very important to the Fifth District, um, and I know that the staff is working hard on delivering this report and providing both the public and the board with some, um, important updates on progress being made related to the resiliency and preparedness, um, and long-term infrastructure of the San Lorenzo Valley as well as the CZ recovery. So I look forward to receiving those reports, um, both on October twenty-first, and I'm engaging in a conversation about that. Thank you.
Supervisor Serpa?
Uh, thank you. Uh, item thirty-six, I'd like to thank Michael Molesky for his service on the IHSS Commission. He's been on that commission for multiple decades, I believe, and, um, rolling off now, but thank you, Michael, um, for your service over the years. Um, also, item fifty, um, the repairs, storm damage repairs for Eureka Canyon Road. I cannot tell you how grateful and happy residents of Eureka Canyon area, um, will be when those repairs are complete, so I just want to thank staff, um, for your due diligence there. Additionally, item fifty-seven, Casserly Road, similar. Thank you very much to staff. Uh, item fifty-nine, um, our collaboration with Ahora Valley Unified School District, um, providing, um, programming and extended learning on some of our park campuses. Thank you very much to PBUSD for collaborating with us again. Um, and celebrating World Breastfeeding Week, thank you to, uh, our partners in the community who came. It's very important for young children in our community. Um, and also deeply concerned about the closure of Planned Parenthood Marmonte. That'll, it's about twenty-three hundred patients who are going to lose access to primary care. Um, so we thank, um, the other safety net clinics in our area for sort of gearing up, and also Dignity Health for gearing up and being ready to receive those patients. So, um, anyway, buckle up, I think we're in for, uh, some difficult, um, situation, uh, with the budgets regarding healthcare, uh, in California and particularly here in Santa Cruz.
Supervisor Cummings?
I just had one comment on, um, item number twenty-seven. Uh, this adopt resolution of intention to establish Santa Cruz Mountain Wine Improvement District and take related actions. Um, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other, but I have received some concerns from, um, people where my district who may be impacted by this. And so I know that today is kind of the first step of what will result in us having a number of public hearings on this item, and look forward to hearing from the public, just to ensure that, um, it's going to have the, the maximum benefit for the people who will be impacted by this. I, I also noticed that it was, you know, when the, um, petitions in favor, um, were submitted, it's about fifty-seven percent of the total, um, Wine Improvement District, um, here. And so just wanted, hoping that we can hear from others so that we can minimize the, the potential negative impacts to the greatest extent feasible. So I look forward to us having, um, the hearings, um, later this year, and I'll be supporting the item today. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. So I too would also like to thank everyone that came out and spoke today, um, especially the folks that came out for the World Breastfeeding Day, and to speak up for the health clinics as well. Uh, what can I say? You know, uh, it's kind of, I think this might be my favorite meeting. We're talking about Aussie, we're talking about wine, I think all we need is cannabis ordinances. All kidding aside, I want to thank the Santa Cruz, uh, Wine Mountain Association and all the staff that did all the diligent work on this project. Uh, you know, I think for me, i- it's important that we have, you know, we have these excellent businesses that are world-renowned, and it's good that we have, you know, more promotions for them, uh, wayfinding signs, which I think is probably the two most important things that they're trying to seek with this district. Uh, so I'm really excited about item number twenty-seven. I would thank also Supervisor Manu for being, being part of it as well. Uh, so thank you. Uh, item number fifty-seven, I'm going to thank, uh, Public Works for all the work on absolutely, uh, road, all the repairs that are going to happen, and also Eureka Canyon, because it's not my district, but I do get a lot of calls and emails about it, thinking it's my district. So thank you for all that work, and that concludes my comments. I'll bring it back to the board to entertain a motion.
I'm of consent.
Second.
Uh, we have motion Supervisor Cummings and a second from Supervisor Koenig. We could take a call.
Supervisor De Sera, aye, Cummings? Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes you down the seat. Next, we have item six-point-one, which is seventeen, I didn't write down item, the motion, people, the folks that took out the motion will have to repeat the, the, the item. Supervisor Koenig?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Um, so the reason I pulled this is just that, um, I, I've heard some concerns about the blanket exclusions that the Coastal Commission had, had suggested that we include, uh, in the ordinance, namely the, uh, blanket exclusion of residential beach zone district, as well as, uh, the entire area subject to coastal hazards from the foot of the bluff, um, to the mean high-tide line. Um, and, uh, had a chance to review a letter from HCD, uh, which, which basically found issue with the same kind of blanket exclusions, in this case for high-fire-risk zones, uh, in Laguna Beach. Um, and this was a letter of technical assistance that HCD provided to the city of Laguna Beach in September nineteenth of twenty-twenty-four, so just this past fall. Uh, so a couple, a couple of questions for staff. Uh, the first is that, uh, were the exclusions in the draft ordinance, um, reviewed by HCD?
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, Stephanie Hansen, Assistant Director, CDI. Um, HCD was involved in, at several points in the drafting of the ordinance, so the ordinance, in one way or another, always had, uh, restrictions on development in, on beaches, on bluffs, in fire hazard zones. Now, if you remember, there are two sections, things have moved from one section to the other section, whether it's a complete ban or you have to mitigate. Um, and then HCD was also involved, um, and, uh, had interactions with the Coastal Commission staff when they were, um, drafting their revisions as well. So they've had a couple shots at it. Um, during our reviews, there were, there, there were concerns about driveways from HCDs, but not so much as how we were handling the sensitive areas.
Okay. Um, I just haven't seen any comment directly from HCD or heard, I mean, I tried reaching out to them directly as well to see if they had any comment on these exclusions, which I understand they commented on our ordinance before we submitted to Coastal Commission, and I think that, uh, you know, I want to congratulate you, uh, Assistant Director Hansen, on that ordinance, and I mean, I think it was very well-balanced. It's changed a little bit after going to the Coastal Commission. And so, uh, you know, ultimately here, I just don't want to get in the middle of two state agencies. Uh, I'd rather let them figure it out, so, um, I would just feel more comfortable if we delayed approving the second read until we actually have explicit feedback from HCD on this. Um, you know, if, it's, I don't, I mean, County Council, do you have any input? I mean, does this, are, are we confident that the ordinance as written is, uh, harmonious with the intent of state law?
Well, thank you for, for asking. I don't have any concerns about this, and I feel like these, some of this was discussed at the last hearing, a little bit of this, uh, this issue was discussed, and these questions were asked and answered at the last hearing, not the particular point about whether HCD, um, had looked at it, but the question of, of the exclusion of RB and, um, addressing the coastal bluffs. But I'm going to ask Ms. Kirkish to, to see whether she has any comments, because she's been the most engaged, um, in our office regarding this issue.
Well, what I'll say is that, um, I agree, so, sorry, Natalie Kirkish, County Council's office, I'll, I agree with my colleague, um, Mr. Heath, that, uh, I do not believe that excluding RB, um, is, presents a legal issue that requires HCD's input on at this time. I also believe that, um, you know, they're, they're aware of this change, they haven't chimed in, and waiting for a response from them might, um, delay this, you know, indefinitely. I'll also add that, um, one of the reasons that the Coastal Commission, uh, excluded the RB zone was for clarity, um, because the way that it was written would have already excluded those parcels due to the, uh, the coastal hazard provisions. Um, so it makes the entire ordinance consistent.
Okay. I mean, I'm just not entirely convinced, given that there's a letter from HCD to Laguna Beach saying basically we don't like blanket exclusions, and now we have blanket exclusions in our ordinance that, I mean, again, I just don't want to get in the middle of two state agencies, so I, I'm, I'm going to move that we continue the item to a date, um, uncertain, pending a response from HCD regarding the removal of the RB Zone District and the blanket exclusion of all parcels in coastal hazard areas. Again, just because I would rather these two agencies work, work it out themselves.
Um, Supervisor, our experience with HCD is that they may not respond. Um, and they also, the state agencies tend to respect each other, right? So it's left to the jurisdictions to kind of harmonize, right, the coastal act with other, uh, state laws. So HCD will tend to stick to their place, leaving, you know, coastal hazards for, um, uh, for other agencies. Um, one thing I would say is that if you want to postpone, the board would need to take action by October eleventh, so can't postpone indefinitely until we hear from HCD. We would have to come back, or the whole thing will fail and we'll start again.
Okay. Well, then, maybe I'll revise, uh, my motion to move to continue this item till, um, no later than September thirtieth, or a date when we have a response from HCD regarding, um, these two blanket exceptions, removal of the RB zone and, uh, exclusion of parcels in the coastal hazard areas.
We start to go to public comment as well. Yes, I'll take it out to public comment if anyone would like to address this decision, this item.
Uh, respectfully, uh, HCD, I actually did a Public Records Act request. Today, HCD has not commented on what's in front of you. Uh, typically, they would, and Supervisor Koenig notes Laguna Beach, uh, had a specific, uh, technical instruction from HCD of not eliminating a residential zone. The specific wording of SB nine is that you're not allowed to do that. Also, something-
Also, something is that county staff have not mapped the area of the exclusion of housing opportunities. So this board doesn't know how many opportunities for housing are being eliminated, nor does staff, most likely. I've looked it up, and it looks like it could be as much as ten thousand. I also reviewed it with YMB staff, and it looks like some of the housing that is shown on your maps or your housing element would be eliminated. I could be wrong, but none of this has been presented to you. And I respectfully also say the people that live in these zones also aren't aware of that. Rio del Mar is in a coastal hazard zone. All of it. Capitola is. We don't have jurisdiction over that, or you don't, but it gives you an example. We're actually technically in a coastal hazard zone here. You're protected by our vetment. So this is an issue that is bigger than what's being presented to you. And I think at the minimum, bring it back, get HCD's input, but also map the area that's affected. Thank you.
Thank you, Steinbruner. Thank you, Supervisor Koenig, for taking this action. And thank you to Mr. Coad Britton for his good work as well. I also support delaying any action on this and having staff specifically ask HCD to comment by a deadline so that our county can move forward with assurance. The fact that HCD made this statement to Laguna Beach is is notable, and we can't ignore it. So do not take action on this today. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Call in user one, your microphone's now available.
Central Coast Community Energy is heavily invested in these lithium ion battery sites under the guise of being green. And we know.
This is an item on the housing elements, not on battery storage systems. Thank you.
Well, the Central Coast Energy is involved in that, and I would like to know publicly how to contact to get off the.
Mike, your microphone is now available.
Is that me, Mike Guth, you've called?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. I wanted to share with you that when this went to the Coastal Commission, what you've received back from Coastal is a very watered down version of what was discussed up there. There's already tremendous compromise with regard to the Coastal Act and what they've sent back to you. I was surprised to hear that this was pulled off the agenda today, or I would have been there in person, so I apologize for not being there. But I will send you all now the correspondences that came in from various agencies. I'm sorry, various groups, including state groups, conservation groups and coastal development groups and, I'm sorry, coastal protection groups about this. There's a lot more going on than the single correspondence that you've got from an applicant who's got a financial interest in doing a project on a single home down there. So I would encourage you to deny the motion and to accept this as it is. I'll say again, this represents a significant compromise relative to what was asked for to have modification to this code in the coastal zone. So I'll leave it at that. There's a lot more to this. And I'm sorry, I wasn't able to present that in writing or in person. I encourage you to accept the revisions as sent to by Coastal. And again, for the third time, this is already quite a compromise relative to what was asked for and considered and discussed at the Coastal Commission. Thank you.
Kevin, your microphone's now available.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez, members of the board, Kevin Huber, I'm the homeowner in Aptos. Thank you for the willingness to reconsider the approval of this LCP amendment that contains modifications from your original ordinance that were added by the Coastal Commission. In addition to my comments, we've submitted a letter from John Erskine of the Nassimin Law Firm for the record. By the way, it's not just the RB zone. It is all land in the county seaward of a coastal bluff. The California Legislature did not, did exclude certain lands from being eligible for SB nine. They did not exclude any specific zones, or they did not exclude all property seaward of the base of a coastal bluff. Instead, they allowed for site-specific analysis of geologic hazards. The Coastal Commission modifications that create a blanket exclusion for the aforementioned areas in essence are an amendment to the SB nine, the contrary, an amendment to SB nine, and it contradicts the intent of the legislation. When you, as an elected board, adopt rules, regulations and policies, you don't expect those to be amended by an appointed body or by staff. I don't believe the California Legislature or the governor approved SB nine with the expectation that an appointed board, the Coastal Commission, would modify the legislation. The Coastal Act and your local coastal plan have long preferred site-specific mitigation over arbitrary blanket exclusions. The amendment you adopted in December of twenty twenty four was the product of several public hearings, workshops, as well as robust dialogue between your staff and HCD staff. The Coastal Commission modifications were not presented to HCD prior to coming back before you. Urges the board to reject the modifications recommended, or at least continue the item as suggested. Thank you.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
With that, I'll bring you back to the board. I'm going to ask the maker of the motion to repeat the motion, but I also have a quick question before he does that. I'm going to ask that if it worked to come back and in, you know, whatever state agency wanted to change the direction of what we've laid out, does that jeopardize the October eleventh deadline?
The Coastal Act provides that the, that the jurisdiction act within six months of the coastal approval, which was April eleventh, so you couldn't extend that indefinitely based on other state agencies.
Okay. So before I vote for, ask the board for any questions or comments, I want to repeat the motion from Supervisor Koenig.
Sure. So it's, I'm, I'm moved to continue this item until September thirtieth or until such a point as we're in receipt of feedback from HCD regarding the removal of the RB Zone District and the blanket exclusion of all parcels in coastal hazard areas.
I'll second that.
Any other comments, questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. If I'm hearing the motion correctly, is it September thirtieth or until we hear back, which means it's beyond September thirtieth, or is September thirtieth the drop dead date to hear this?
Correct. I'm looking at September thirtieth as a drop dead date. I mean, that's, you know, almost two months from now. That gives HCD plenty of time. If they don't want to submit a comment by then, fine, at least we've asked them and they have, and they've decided to pass on the opportunity because, you know, maybe as staff asserts, they've already talked to the Coastal Commission, everyone's finding a hunky door with this. Great, you know, we can move on. But yeah, so if we, and if we get feedback sooner, then we could agenda soon.
Okay, so that's helpful. I think how I heard it, it was September thirtieth or until we hear from them. So I would say September thirtieth, unless we hear from them earlier or something like that.
Right.
Some friendly amendment of that.
Accepted, yes.
My next question is to staff, do we know if we have any projects or applications in the queue that will be impacted by deferring this item another two months?
I don't believe so. Even the application that you've heard about in your past hearing and today, Mr. Hubers, which Mr. Britton is representing, is, is not affected by this ordinance, right? So they had a complete application a long time ago. Frankly, another month until second reading wouldn't make that big a difference. I would just say that the Coastal's modifications is a belt and suspenders approach, right? So while staff was relying on definitions of sensitive areas and eschas, what the Coastal Commission has decided to do is to make the ordinance more inherently complete. So you couldn't do it before, even if this language was slightly different, you wouldn't have been able to build an SB nine development in the coastal areas. And the, the last thing I just want to say is this is a ministerial approach, right? So if you're in sensitive areas or coastal hazard areas or other geological areas or wetlands, you don't belong in a ministerial approach. You need to be in a discretionary process. Last item. Thank you.
One more question. So by deferring it, do you see any risk or concern by deferring it another month?
No.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, I, I asked the question about potential permits because I would be concerned if this was like a loophole opportunity for one more project to sneak through. It doesn't sound like that's the case. You know, I voted in favor of this ordinance on first reading, and I'm inclined to support it again when it does come back. So my support of this motion isn't about any concern about the, the motion as is, but, you know, I appreciate the points being brought up by Supervisor Koenig. And if it seems like there's no impact on deferring to have the second read again in a month, then I'm happy to support that motion as well.
Supervisor Cummings?
Yeah, I'll just say that so when this first came before the board last year, I believe in myself and Supervisor Fran at the time voted against it because of the, some of the environmental protections that have been recommended by staff were kind of rolled back. And so for those reasons, you know, I'm still going to vote no on the current motion. And, you know, I would be voting no on it to be consistent with how my voting has been on this item, because I do believe that some of the environmental protections that were earlier, that were introduced at the beginning have been removed. I do think that this does provide some additional environmental protections. I think I was the only no vote at the Coastal Commission, just being consistent with my vote here at the board. And so I'm going to continue to vote no on this item. Thanks.
You know, I, I just, I do, I do see, you know, what they, I see that you're trying to make this, how would I say, give it enough time for it to go through with the deadline. But I, I think we just got to move things along. I think our planning department did a lot of work behind the scenes to, you know, get to the point where we're at. We passed it a first time already, so I'm going to vote no on the motion. But we do have a motion from Supervisor Koenig, and we do have a second from Supervisor De Sera. If you could take a call vote.
Supervisor De Sera.
I.
Cummings. Martinez.
I.
Koenig.
I.
Hernandez.
No. Motion passes with due to seventy votes Supervisor Hernandez and Supervisor Cummings. Next, we have item six point two. I didn't talk down. If you can read the item, Supervisor Koenig.
Certainly, this was formerly item twenty five. So this was to adopt a resolution to continue opting out of Assembly Bill fourteen sixteen as directed by the board on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, resulting in not listing supporters or opponents of local measures on county ballots. So when we opted out of this, you know, part of the, the reason for that is that when we have long ballots, listing supporters and opponents on them can lead to twice as many ballot cards, which really increases the cost of elections. I think that in this case, we, we have a special election in the city of Santa Cruz this fall, which is really only going to be one question. And so that voters could actually be served by having this assembly bill in effect. It won't add any cost to the election that I'm aware, although our county clerk can speak to that. And so I see no harm in letting this assembly bill be in effect through the fall. And then I would suggest that we ultimately postpone or that we opt out again in January of twenty six. But I'll get back to the chair.
Thank you.
Hi, Tricia Weber, County Clerk, Register of Voters. To directly respond to the comments that Supervisor Koenig said, there's actually two questions for the city of Santa Cruz. But the deadline to be on the ballot for a jurisdiction to put something onto the ballot is actually Friday. So as of right now, only the city of Santa Cruz, through two initiative measures, have something to go on the ballot. We are in candidate filing right now for four special districts. They may or may not end up on the ballot, and we don't know if there's any other local jurisdiction that will pass a resolution to put something onto the ballot before Friday at five o'clock. Additionally, it appears that there is going to be a special statewide election on November fourth, where there will be at least one question regarding amending the constitution to allow for redistricting by the legislature instead of by the independent redistricting commission following, following census data. We don't know if that's going to happen either. So I will answer that, yes, currently, as of yesterday, the city of Santa Cruz adopted a resolution to put two measures onto the ballot. To respond to another comment that you made, I am of the belief that we either do it or we don't. So if we're going to do supporters and opponents on the ballot, we shouldn't take it away for later. Because why, I mean, you know, looking at, my job is to make sure that all about are, all voters have the same access. So why would I say, oh, the city of Santa Cruz voters deserve a different type of access than, say, a voter in another jurisdiction? So my, my comment to that is, is if you choose to do the supporters and the opponents, that you don't turn around a couple of months later and say, we're not going to do it because it, it removes access that you gave some other voters. But I will agree that there will probably not be additional costs because I think even if we have more jurisdictions go on, we will not move to more than one ballot card.
Really quick, though. So Friday is a deadline.
Yes, but not for the state.
Okay.
The state legislature has a different set of deadlines.
Okay. So I'll bring you back to the board right now, but let me first go out to the public if there's no further comment from Supervisor Koenig.
I, I just, I mean, I appreciate the comments of the clerk. I mean, I generally agree that, you know, we should strive for, for equal information. I mean, at the same time, everything has a cost benefit analysis, and in a situation where, you know, where it's most likely not to cost any additional money to let this state law be in effect, why, why not try it out?
Okay, with that, we'll take it out to see if anybody has any comments on this item. See, none? Anyone online?
Yes, Chair.
Okay.
Call in user one, your microphone's now available.
Could you clarify, please? I've read what number twenty five says on the agenda packet. This would result in not listing supporters and opponents of local measures, or it would list them. I, as a voter, find it instructive to read supporters and opponents of whatever candidate or measure is on. Could you clarify, please?
I, I would be happy to do so.
We'll be right, we'll, we'll bring back to clarification once the comment's done.
Okay.
We'll call you up.
I see no further speakers online, Chair.
Okay.
Want to work on my squat. Want to work on my squats. Um, so what, what AB fourteen sixteen is that law is to list on the ballot itself, the supporters and the opponents of a measure. It, they will also be listed in the voter information guide along with the arguments. But when arguments are turned in, then the people turning in the, um, the argument also turn in this list. Um, and it's one hundred and twenty five characters, what the list is. It equals two lines of print on a ballot. Um, so it's not necessarily the full list. It could include abbreviations, but it's, it, it, it lists, you know, names or organizations that were also signers on the argument, but the full list and the full argument still remains in the book. I hope that provided the clarification needed.
Thank you. Thank you for the, uh, we'll bring you back to the board. Any additional comments Supervisor Martinez?
Uh, first, um, would the maker of the motion please repeat the motion?
Sure. I, I guess I'd move to continue this item until the first meeting in January of twenty twenty six. Does that work?
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that that does work because the board in April decided to opt out and instructed that staff bring back a resolution to confirm that. So just continuing this item, um, you're left with a record in the minutes that the board opted out in April.
So then you're saying if we wanted it to be in effect, we'd have to pass another resolution saying that we?
Not another resolution. I think it, I think it would be sufficient for, for, for your board to, to actually just, um, decide that you are going to, um, comply with AB fourteen sixty two. AB fourteen sixteen, thank you, that, that, that the board, that the board essentially is, is, is reversing or, or, um, modifying its, its earlier decision in April that's reflected in the minutes and instructing staff to come back with something. I don't know what you're wanting to come back with in January, but maybe you could be more specific on what you want staff to bring back in January.
Uh, well, right. Some kind of, um, general report on how it went to comply and whether we should, in for future elections, comply with AB fourteen sixteen or not.
Oh, that makes sense.
Would be the kind of report we'd be looking for in January. I, I understand that, I understand that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
If there's any further comment? Okay.
Um, yes, thank you for the motion. Um, you know, I do want to start off by recognizing that it's a tremendous amount of effort to put together these ballots. Um, I think most people don't recognize how much administrative work goes into ensuring that every voter had for where they live, has the districts that they live in and all the information available. And it does come to a big cost to the county, which is why in the past this board has considered opting out. Because I think it's somewhere of upwards of $250,000 per additional page of a ballot. So I, I recognize why this has come before us. Um, given that, you know, AB fourteen sixteen was really rooted in the values of voter transparency and voter understanding and, um, and ensuring that when a voter casts their ballot, they have all the information they need to be informed. And so if there isn't a financial cost to the county to implement AB fourteen sixteen and, um, it's aligned with the values of our county, then I certainly support for the November election, um, including the supporters and opponents on it. And then learning more about, um, the impact of that and also the impact, you know, the cost impact of future elections and continuing to implement the state law. Thank you.
Supervisor to Serpa?
Trish, if you can, thank you. So it was my understanding that this would cost, it, it sounds like maybe there's no cost for November because there's not that many measures, et cetera, et cetera, on the ballot this time. But in the future, it might cost upwards of $170,000 per ballot or what? Could you explain that a little bit further?
Sure. Um, each, it, each time that we would list, um, supporters and opponents on a measure, it adds four extra lines of text onto the ballot. So looking at both June of, or sorry, March of last year and November of last year, even adding four extra lines on a single one would have pushed us to a second card. Using last year's costs, now of course postage has gone up and some other things have gone up. It was about a dollar. Uh, it's approximately a dollar. It's probably a little more now to do for each extra card. And, um, if you, if one ballot style goes to two cards, then everybody goes to two cards, even if they don't need to go to two cards. Say there wasn't, you know, because there's meas, you know, some, some areas will have a shorter ballot and other areas will have a longer ballot depending on what, what they're voting for. But everyone would move to two cards. So taking our voter numbers at a dollar each, we're looking at a hundred and seventy thousand plus, you know, around there in order to add a second card to a ballot.
A hundred and seventy thousand. So that was correct.
Yeah.
You, you really told me.
I liked the two fifty two. Trust me. I was like, oh, maybe I can fit that. No, I'm teasing. But, but it, it, there is an additional cost because it's mailing, it's the supplies, it's the storage. You know, it takes more storage to store two cards instead of one. Um, the staff time, it's increased to do a ballot, um, prep, to prep it through. Um, so that's all encapsled in with that one dollar area.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I sort of feel like we should make this decision. Like we rejected this in April. If we're going to change our decision on this, we should and keep it that way. Um, I honestly don't, I mean, all of that information is in people's voter guides already, right? People should be doing their research, looking at their voter guides. They have it online. They have it in paper. It's mailed out to every household. Um, so I am inclined to actually to vote no on this or to vote, yeah, well, yeah, not, maybe not to support, um, the current motion as it stands because we, I think we should either do it or not do it. But, um, given our very difficult budget situation, it just doesn't seem prudent to me to spend a hundred and seventy thousand dollars extra each election to provide this when it's already provided to the voters online and in paper form. Thank you.
Supervisor Cummings?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to say that, um, you know, this is a fairly new law that we're dealing with. And back in April, when we first voted on this, we didn't know if we were going to have a special election. Um, now that it's clear that there are going to be items on the ballot and that there are fewer items and this isn't going to, the additional language isn't going to cost more for taxpayers. You know, I kind of see this as an opportunity for us to use this, uh, moment as a pilot to just see, you know, what impact does this have on people's voting, their understanding of ballot measures? Um, and so, um, while I feel like we should eventually take some kind of, you know, hard stance, whether we want to opt in or opt out, we've never had not, we've never opted in. And I think this ballot measure or this, um, law went into effect back in like twenty twenty two. So, you know, I've, and, and since then, um, most often I don't think we've had any, maybe we've had a couple of special elections here or there, but I think this is an opportunity for our board to actually just see how this could play out, um, as a pilot. And so I'm supportive of this direction. I do think we should have an item come back in January for us to kind of assess and have an understanding of how this went costs. You know, maybe even having members of the public be able to speak to us on, um, their experience with, um, this form of voting. And then, uh, the, the board should, should take an action at that time. So that concludes my comments.
Go ahead.
All right. I, I have a question on the follow-up, um, since you're saying that you're thinking this is a pilot. I just want to make sure that what we're piloting is how the, on a local measure, if their people are, it's affecting them because for the state measures, they are already on the ballot listing the opponents and the supporters. And there's been no data gathered across the state of California in all of twenty three and all of twenty four stating that for the statewide measures, listing the opponents and the supporters on the ballot created either more understanding or more turnout in order to vote for those state measures. So I'm trying, I want to make sure that I'm understanding that in this pilot and, um, my question also is who's piloting it, that you're looking for local only.
Yeah, there's really no pilot. It's, 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 I, I think that, that it's, it's, um, the, the use of that term may end up being confusing to people. It's either opt in, um, it, 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 you, you comply with the law by, by doing what the legislature says to do, or you choose to opt out. And maybe you could call opting out a pilot, if you wanted to call it, but you're allowed to opt out every election. If you wanted to opt out every election in the future, you can pick and choose as you go, as you go forward. So to say, um, you know, you're, you're having a pilot project or something like that, I just, I, I just wouldn't want the board to be confused or the public to be confused around that.
Okay. So let me rephrase it then. Um, I guess from my perspective, it seems like this is an opportunity for us to opt in to see how this may impact voters on a local level. And then, and then we have an opportunity early next year to have an understanding of how this went and whether or not we want to opt out of the next election.
Yeah. And the, and the only, the only way to reframe that or whatever is, 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 it's not an opportunity to opt in. The county is required to comply with the law unless you opt out. There's not an opt in.
Okay.
There.
Thank you. Um, so, I mean, it's okay for us to rehash and rediscover this. Again, um, I just think it's, uh, you know, something that we voted on, on April and we're taking valuable staff time and I just don't see the value of intent. So I want to continue to support, uh, the staff recruitment and I won't be supporting the, the new motion. With that, you have a motion by Supervisor, uh, Manu Koenig and second by Supervisor Martinez. We'll take a roll call vote. Can you repeat the motion?
I suppose it's to, uh, man, choose to, uh,
I can help. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It, it sounds like your motion was to, um, modify your decision in April and, um, instead, um, not opt out of AB fourteen sixteen at this time.
Correct. And request that our clerk of elections return in January with feedback on how the process of implementing this state law went.
Supervisor? Just add a friendly amendment to that and that when this comes back, we have an opportunity to decide on whether we're going to opt out for the following year's election.
Accepted. Great. Can we take a roll call vote? Friendly amendment?
Yes. Supervisor to Serpa? No. Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
Hernandez?
No. Motion passes to send the votes, uh, Hernandez and Supervisor to Serpa. That was item twenty five, six point two, right?
Okay. Now the regular agenda.
Next we move on to the regular agenda. The next agenda item is number seven, a presentation by the Central Coast Community Energy, three CE on the annual member agency update. I'll turn it over to Sophia Schwartz of three CE, Community Relations Manager and Rob Shaw, CEO for three CE for the presentation. The mic, ring button, gray button.
Thank you, Chair Hernandez. Members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here, um, to report and provide the annual report of Central Coast Community Energy. My name is Robert Shaw. I'm a resident of Aptos, um, a constituent, um, and neighbor of many of you. I'm joined by Sophia Schwartzky, our Community Relations Manager for northern, um, area of our district. Central Coast, um, represents, or is comprised of thirty cities, five counties. We serve five hundred and nineteen thousand accounts and over one point one million customers and individuals. I want to start by thanking Supervisor Martinez for serving on our policy board and for CAO Palacios, um, who's been serving, um, on our operations board since the inception of Central Coast Community Energy. Their leadership really has, uh, contributed to the success and strength of the agency. Um, I will talk to these, um, figures in just one moment, but I think it's important to recognize the significant headwinds that the renewable energy industry is facing and our role in addressing some of those. So some of you've heard about, some of them you haven't. One of the most significant is project delays, projects that are being delayed, that renewable energy that we're counting on to meet our customer needs, um, is facing real challenges in the industry of getting interconnected, challenges in cost and getting, uh, developed and being brought online. That impacts our ability to deliver on our goals of reaching a hundred percent by twenty thirty and the state's requirements of meeting a hundred percent by twenty forty five. Uh, another significant, and I'm sure everybody has heard about it, the federal administration's, um, HR one, which rolls back both consumer credits for a lot of electrification projects, home investment projects. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about strategies and you, there's a deadline of September thirtieth. So we really encourage everybody to, um, get applications for those, um, incentives in. And remember that, um, they stack with our incentives. So, um, they're incentive dollars waiting for you. If you're a, a member of our community and a customer of three CE. Um, also in that bill is peeling back a lot of the investment tax credits and production crack tax credits that the industry relies on. Um, and those things are things that you can plan for. We can manage through those. But what has been really disruptive to the industry has been the uncertainty in the market, um, being fed by tariff concerns, um, being fed by questions about how we're going to interpret, um, the provisions of starting constructions, provisions of what a foreign business or a foreign entity of concern is, um, so that we can deliver those projects in the future. And then a third that probably not very many people, um, are, are aware of is the headwind of the state regulatory process. The California Public Utilities Commission continues to take a stance, um, regarding what's called the power charge indifference adjustment, um, which is a process by which they are shifting costs for the poor management of, um, the IOU, the investor owned utilities portfolios. That poor management leads to additional costs that's being shifted onto more and more Californians every day. Um, and that's a significant headwind that our agency faces. But in the face of that, uh, those headwinds, uh, the leadership that Supervisor Martinez and the rest of our policy board has shown, has led to a really strong, stable, healthy organization. We continue to be A rated. We continue to grow our reserves. We're, our operating costs are dropping over the next year. We're seeing significant savings in the cost of energy. Our staff, your energy industry experts that serve as your staff through three CE are less than two percent of the total budget, one percent for salaries, two percent of total cost of the budget for this agency. Um, we have no debt, no pension liabilities. A lot of that comes from really good fiscal discipline and decision-making around our energy risk management policies and how we manage our business. That's an important part of what we do. Three CE has, um, and since our inception, delivered on our promises. First, to provide competitive rates. All of these financial figures you see on the slide in front of you, these are things that are leading to the ability. We have never been on a class, uh, basis more expensive than PG and E. Some of those headwinds that I just talked about and the CPUC regulatory structure, those are going to be challenges in the future, but over seven years, never been more expensive than our IOU counterparts. Um, we continue to develop new renewables. We have over a gigawatt of new projects delivering clean, hundred percent renewable energy into the California grid. Um, and we're doing that at a scale that is really unprecedented for an agency of our size. Over five hundred megawatts of energy storage. And we'll hear a lot about the need to diversify our energy storage. of energy storage. And we'll hear a lot about the need to diversify our energy storage. We do have lithium projects in our portfolio. We also have vanadium flow batteries in our portfolio. Those batteries are significantly challenged because they're not market ready. So those will have a challenge getting delivered. Um, we also have, um, pumped air compressed air projects and Ms. Schwartzky will talk a little bit about that in a moment. We're also looking at projects that, that are pumped hydro. We're looking at gravity fed projects. So we're looking at significant diversity in our storage fleet, which is necessary to maximize the value and to reduce cost to customers. This is a nonprofit agency. We do not make profits. Everything that we spend is a customer rate. It's a pass through to customers. So by managing this business, making those good financial decisions is how we keep customer rates low. And then finally, our energy programs. We have over 11 energy programs in our portfolio, um, both for customers and member agencies. Over our lifetime, we've invested more than $40 million into our local communities, which Ms. Schwartzky will walk through exactly what that means in Santa Cruz County. But this year, we'll be spending $14.8 million in incentive dollars that are going out to the community. That's a direct benefit that members of our customer, our customers and members of this agency are able to take advantage of. And we'll be moving our, um, battery or our, um, energy programs to more of a customer empowerment focus. So right now we have a lot of rebate structures, but something like our residential battery program is giving customers the ability to manage how they use electricity, giving them the ability to manage their cost of electricity, reduce their cost of electricity. And we've been getting a lot of feedback from local solar developers that in the face of HR1 and the Trump administration's attack on the renewable energy industry, that our program is helping to stabilize their businesses as we move forward. Um, very proud of the work that this agency is doing, very proud of the staff work. Um, and I want to turn it over to Ms. Schwartzky to walk through some of the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. And thank you, Chair Hernandez and members of the board for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I'd like to begin with a very brief overview of 3CE for members of the public who may be less familiar with the work that we do. Like Rob said, 3CE is the public agency that sources energy for the Central Coast. We work in partnership with PG&E, who manages energy transmission and delivery services. 3CE serves 30 cities and five counties. And like Rob said, we provide energy to 1.2 million people along the Central Coast. Since our inception in 2018, 3CE has invested $43 million into Central Coast communities. Uh, and again, to reiterate what Rob said, over that same period, we've consistently provided energy generation at rates lower than PG&E's. At 3CE, we are on a pathway to deliver our customers 100% clean and renewable energy. We invest in new clean energy projects that supply power across California with a dedicated portion of those projects reserved for 3CE customers. Last year, 3CE delivered enough power to power more than 350,000 homes along the Central Coast. These efforts prevented emissions equivalent to taking 105,000 gas powered vehicles off the road for an entire year. 3CE has contracts in place to supply 64% of our total load with renewable energy by October of 2028. And we have additional contracts pending approval that could increase this number by 5% to 17%. This puts us well ahead of state clean energy requirements and moves us closer to a carbon free future. Um, we've received many questions about the role that battery storage plays in the energy transition. So I'd like to take the next couple of slides here to delve into that a bit more. Battery storage is essential for California's energy transition and just as importantly to customer affordability. Batteries capture renewable energy when the sun is shining and the wind is blowing, then release it later in the day when demand is high and wind and solar power are less available. Batteries reduce fossil fuel reliance during peak hours, lowering electricity rates for our customers. They can be strategically located near existing fossil fuel plants, reducing their operating hours and improving the air quality in surrounding communities. For example, 3CE is investing in battery projects adjacent to four gas plants that will cut their pollution by an average of 54%. Battery projects also contribute to local economic development by creating construction and operation jobs, generating new tax revenue and increasing capacity to support new and growing businesses. For residential customers, home batteries provide backup power and store cheap renewable energy for use during expensive peak hours. So let's look at a real world example to illustrate the value of battery storage. During Labor Day weekend in 2022, California issued its most recent flex alert, which is a statewide call to reduce energy use during a major heat wave. So you might remember getting a text message asking you to conserve energy to prevent rolling blackouts. The graph that you see here shows the statewide energy mix from that day. The red area represents fossil fuels, which make up the largest portion. The green shows renewable sources like solar and wind, which peak during the day, then drop off sharply at sunset. Now take a look at the very thin orange lines that you'll see at the very bottom and the very top of the graph. This area represents batteries. Uh, the top portion is, excuse me, the bottom portion is batteries charging during daylight hours while the top portion is these same batteries discharging energy back into the grid when it's most needed. Uh, and again, on this day, we needed a flex alert in order to prevent blackouts. Now we're going to look at a more recent heat wave. On July 4th of last year, despite another period of extremely high energy demand, there was no need for a flex alert to avoid blackouts. The graph here tells the story. The green bar again represents renewable energy, which grew taller as more solar projects came online. The red bar representing fossil fuels became smaller, but most notably, the orange bars representing batteries more than tripled. Batteries charged during the day and discharged power during peak evening hours, providing critical support when our state needed it the most. So I think this graph, uh, really demonstrates how batteries extend renewable energy, uh, like wind and solar, their usefulness into evening hours. So we've heard from many community members with questions about the safety of utility scale battery storage. Uh, so I'd like to take a moment to share a few key points with you. Uh, firstly, 3CE does not have any power purchase agreements with indoor battery projects like Vistra's Moss Landing facility was. All of the battery projects that 3CE invests in are containerized systems, uh, that include the latest, uh, individual fire suppression technology and comply with the latest fire and building codes. Uh, and finally, battery system failure rates have dropped 98% since 2018, and that's despite a global battery deployment, uh, that increased by more than 25,000%. Um, so at 3CE, we are also investing in new innovative storage technology. And one example that I am especially excited to show you is the Willow Rock Energy Storage Center. This project will use compressed air to power turbines. And once it is online, it will be the largest compressed air storage project in the world. This project will provide 200 megawatts of power to 3CE customers alone. A few more projects I'd like to highlight for you are the Artina Solar Plus Storage Project, the Atlas Solar Project, and the Victory Pass Solar Plus Storage Project. These are among some of the latest projects that 3CE has invested in. Together, these three projects will supply enough clean power to, uh, energize the homes of 263,000 3CE customers. Um, delivering clean energy is only part of what we do at 3CE. Uh, equally important is connecting with the communities we serve. Our outreach team is active across the region. We sponsor local events, host webinars, and lead workshops that raise awareness and inform the development of our energy programs. To better meet the needs of our diverse communities, 3CE has hired additional bilingual staff. We've expanded the translated materials that we have available, and we've developed an action plan focused on serving underserved communities. Our customer service line now offers support in more than 150 languages. In addition to engaging our communities through outreach and education, 3CE also provides direct support through a range of customer programs. These programs empower customers to electrify their homes, vehicles, and businesses while saving money in the process. Our Electrify Your Ride Program, for example, offers up to $4,000 towards the purchase of an electric vehicle. And that program also includes funding for EV charging stations. Additional programs help lower the cost of upgrading to electric appliances, installing battery storage, and advancing electrification in the agricultural sector. 3CE staff is always available and ready to help any of your constituents apply to these programs or just get more information. So I'll, I'll leave some business cards with your clerk if you'd like to reach out for more information. 3CE also offers programs for member agencies like the County of Santa Cruz to support electrifying your fleet vehicles, installing EV chargers, purchasing electric buses, and adopting reach codes. Since 2018, nearly 7,000 customers have benefited from 3CE's programs, putting more than $11 million back into the Central Coast. Over 4 million of that support went directly to underserved community members. Uh, so this slide highlights how Santa Cruz County and its incorporated cities have benefited from 3CE's programs to date. Combined, the county has received over $5.87 million in funding through 3CE. So before I close today, I want to circle back on some of what Rob spoke about at the beginning of our presentation. I want to provide a brief legislative update. Um, like Rob said, the federal mega bill known as HR1 or the big beautiful bill does impact 3CE's customers. The bill eliminates federal tax credits for electric vehicles after September 30th and for home energy upgrades after December 31st. Many of our customers combine these federal incentives with the programs that 3CE offers. So we are really encouraging our customers who do want to electrify to do so now that they can, so that they can get the max rebate amount from both, uh, 3CE and the federal government. HR1 also eliminates tax credits for utility scale solar and wind projects that haven't broken ground by 2027. These projects are cheaper and quicker to build than their natural gas alternatives. And without federal support, they may become more difficult to develop, which could potentially lead to higher energy costs for our customers. Uh, to help address this, 3CE is supporting the Pathways Initiative, which would create a regional energy market across California and other Western states. This market would enable us to sell excess renewable power that we have during the day, uh, reducing emissions across the region and generating nearly $800 million in savings for Californians. Looking ahead, advancing legislation to improve resource adequacy trading presents another opportunity for us to lower costs for customers. So that concludes our presentation for today. Thank you again, Chair Hernandez and members of the board for the opportunity to share this update. We really appreciate your continued partnership and support as we work together to deliver clean, reliable, and affordable energy to our communities. Uh, Rob and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think I'll go with the board first. Um, just to, I know they've been here for a while already, uh, more than anticipated, I guess. Supervisor Koenig.
Uh, well, thank you, Rob. Thank you, Sophia, for the presentation. Um, you know, your agency's work is just phenomenal and, um, has just put our, I mean, entire Central Coast region in a much better place to respond to the climate crisis. Um, it's, you know, when we look at our own climate action and adaptation plan here in the county, I mean, energy is sort of not even a factor anymore because you guys are doing such a good job, uh, getting a handle on it. So thank you for all your good work. Uh, and of course, thank you to Supervisor McPherson and his analyst Jenny Johnson for really helping to, to spearhead the effort to get this, uh, agency creative. Um, I mean, it's really encouraging to hear that, um, you know, we're still, you're, you're still very much full steam ahead. I mean, I think that the original goal of, uh, net zero energy was 2030, and now you're saying we can potentially reach that by 2028. Is that, um, even in considering, you know, the, the impacts of HR1 or is there some, what, what degree of confidence do you have in getting to net zero by 2028?
I think it will be a significant challenge. Thank you for the question, Supervisor Koenig. Um, even 2030 will be a significant challenge. As we build out the agency and we build out our energy portfolio, we must get much more sophisticated in how that portfolio works together. That's why support of SB 540 is so critical for the success of all energy industries and bringing down costs for Californians. We can't pretend that the, the border of California stops the flow of electricity. We've got to maximize the electricity and the overbuilding of solar we have in California and other parts of the, the state. It will be a challenge. We are seeing a lot of projects being delayed. The interconnection getting connected to the grid is a significant challenge. Uh, Ms. Schwartzky was sharing that we're not slowing down. We're finding very creative contractual structures to be able to continue bringing projects forward. Whether those projects all get delivered will be a product of how we weather, um, this, these very unevense's as we move forward together.
Got it. Yeah. And thank you for the graph showing kind of energy use throughout the day and the different sources. That is helpful in understanding the, uh, importance of, of, um, energy storage and battery storage. Um, and it looked like in getting to 2028 or 2030, you know, we were close to, I have to see the graphic again, it'd be, I think it was about 50% we expect to get to, uh, by that time. Can you just help me understand? I mean, does that mean that we've only met our zero emission goal during the day? Like in theory, should those both be 100%? I just help me understand what that, yeah, that, that, thank you. So a little over 50 is, um, anticipated by 2028. I guess it's contracts. Is that, is that right? Um, so what would the green or, or greener bar there ideally be, um, for us to, to reach our goals?
Well, I, I believe in, um, Ms. Schwartzky, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on this, but the blue bar is the generation. So that's, those are the projects that are generating electricity. And then the green or teal bar is the storage projects that's helping maximize that energy generation, bring cost down for our customers. Um, yes, from a, you know, by 2027, we'll have a few more projects coming online. We'll have generation and contracts for generation that will come to a little over 75%. Storage, um, that storage bar is more of a progress. It, storage doesn't lead to generation. Storage is actually a draw on generation. So it's just moving it to a different time of day. Um, this represents significant progress. The real need that we have is getting these projects to deliver and then contracting for additional projects that go beyond the 28 period because some of these earlier projects will start to roll off of the portfolio in 2022 and 2020, or 2034 and so on. So it's a continually buying cycle that we have. Um, I think that we are on track from a energy procurement strategy standpoint, but as I mentioned, we've now got to get more, we've built the base and we've got to get more specific around how those projects operate together. I, I know, I'm not addressing your exact question, what should that number be by, to be on target? I believe we are on target. The uncertainty is in the future. So we have to manage that future in our contract. So we have to manage that future in our contract structures and really over procuring the engagement we have with developers so that we have projects that we'll, we'll find which developers can weather these storms and which ones cannot.
Right. It's great to hear that you're investing in the compressed air facility and sort of looking at all, you know, alternatives, all means of energy storage. You even mentioned pumped hydro, right? I mean, like, is there an opportunity to use solar power during the day to pump water from the San Luis reservoir four bay back into the, I guess, maybe that's not a power generating facility. So, but anyway, so you would have to, well, I guess the question is what, what percentage of the mix do you see those alternatives being? You know, how, can you just talk a little bit about sort of where those technologies are compared to battery energy storage?
All, all energy storage is, is a, a storage technology. So from a breakdown at an industry level, I also serve as the president of CalCCA. At an industry level, I think you see something like 79% of all projects planned in the future that are currently contracted for are the newer phase lithium. So iron phosphate lithium batteries for eight hour duration. And then much smaller beyond that. The issue is the scalability of those projects. Our compressed air project, which we're a 200 megawatt off taker. That's nearly half of our, our entire storage portfolio. That is an emerging technology. It's not only the largest in the United States, it's the first of that size in the United States. SMUD has a very small project. Finding projects that are viable, that you can bring to market. Our board has identified as a goal in its project selection criteria, but has also set a boundary around, you know, our customers are not venture capitalists. Our customers aren't going out and saying, take my money to see if you can make this developer's dreams come true. That is not our job. Our job is to look at technologies that make sense in our portfolio and for our customers and deliver those. The vanadium batteries, we had about 32 megawatts. I, I unfortunately don't think that those batteries will succeed. And that's a lot of the tariff and interest rate challenges to that industry. It's just not ready. You'll hear a lot about sodium batteries. I've checked with my colleagues around the state. There's no sodium battery at a utility scale that has been proposed or submitted in any request for offers. So I don't see that as being viable currently. Additionally, there are some other technologies. Most of the reservoir capacity and four bay capacity in the state of California is either a federal water project or state water project. There are pump houses and generation stations associated with those. The project that we're looking at would be repurposing a couple of different reservoirs in the Sierras and, and trying to make that work on behalf of customers. So we're constantly looking for additional technologies. We are technology agnostic in that way. But the reality is the industry only provides currently one technology.
Thank you.
Supervisor just a breath.
Thank you. I've just been on your webpage because I am curious about the $43 million in givebacks to community benefit. Can you just highlight some of that briefly?
Yeah, um, Ms. Schwartzky will bring up the slide again for the public. But our board has set as part of our, our budget, energy program development. These are going to being able to purchase electric vehicles. All of our programs are designed with an equity lens. So there are higher rebates, marketing focused on disadvantaged communities and communities of concern. We have 36% of all of our program dollars are going to income qualified customers. That's a staggering number when you think about electric vehicles, charging equipment, electric buses in at-risk school districts or title, title one school districts. So the, our programs are a whole host of different things. But as we move forward, it's much more about dynamic pricing, giving customers more control of their energy demands. Here in Santa Cruz County, you can see the names of the programs, happy to talk through what these are. And then the dollar amounts since the inception of the agency that our customers are benefiting from here. I hope that addresses your question.
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor Cummings.
I first just want to thank you all for your hard work in this field. I mean, we think about how every year we're seeing the impacts of climate change kind of increase and become much more devastating. It's programs like this that's really going to help us achieve our goals around trying to reduce our carbon emissions and mitigate the impacts of climate change. So just want to appreciate your dedication to this field and the work that you all do. The only question, I, I really don't have that many questions. I appreciate the content. It's pretty clearly laid out for me and I just really hope that, um, you know, people can understand the negative impacts of the current federal administration and how that really is going to, you know, um, and take us back in our efforts to try to mitigate the impact of climate change. And hopefully people will wake up during next elections to make sure that we can, you know, get rid of these people and get people in federal office who are really going to support our efforts as we're trying to mitigate the impacts of climate change through renewable energy. The one question I did have was around the Willow Rock Energy storage area. I was just curious where that's located because it seems like a really cool project using compressed air to, to create energy. And so just wondering where that's at. And then also like what other facilities are out there like this? It's just a, it's just really intriguing to, to learn more about this. So.
There, there are a lot of amazing storage technologies. This particular project is located in Kern County, near the Tehachapi area. It's the only one in California that I'm aware of. The developer is Hydro Store and they are looking at other projects. There are a lot of other technologies, gravity fed technologies, taking things up in an elevator and dropping very heavy things to generate electricity buoyancy using some subvert, submerging air bags in the sea and letting them come back up to generate energy. Utilizing, one of the projects that we're utilizing, hybrid batteries, airing them with Peker facilities so that those facilities aren't emitting in the evening hours. Lots of very unique technologies. They all take a good deal of developer ingenuity. But the real challenge around them is the efficiency. It takes more energy to pull the bag to the bottom of the ocean, plus all of the, the impacts that it has when you do that in the ocean and then release it back. And you, it takes more, it won't work as a storage device because then customers are, are paying for that. So you've got to find technologies that work from a, a customer cost perspective.
Great. Thank you again for being here today and look forward to learning more and supporting you all as you move forward.
Supervisor Martinez.
Yes, um, well, thank you, Mr. Shawn, Ms. Schwartzky for the presentation today. I want to share to my colleagues as the county representative on the 3CE board, that it has been an incredible honor and privilege to be a member of this board and to have a front row seat to the work of this agency. You know, I'm, I'm a new member of the board and my prior history is not in energy. So it's truly been an opportunity for me to learn as a novice about, um, you know, our California's clean energy goals and the direct relationship between greenhouse gases and carbon emissions on our climate and, and, you know, seeing the impact in our local communities, like in District Five and, you know, the impact that we've seen in climate change and, and really being a part of advancing efforts to reduce that impact. So it's been a very meaningful role for me to play and a new role for me to play. And it has been incredibly, I've been incredibly impressed by the caliber of the staff in your agency and the, the knowledge that you carry, as well as really your care for your members and all of your, um, you know, every resident in our community who's benefiting from this. You know, really by investing in community choice energy, it's our region saying that we want to have control and ownership over our energy and we want to take that out of the hands of private utilities like PG&E. And so by investing in a, in a nonprofit in this way, I really feel like it's, it's a great example of our values. And, and it's going to have a lasting impact. And I'm, and I'm proud to be the supervisor in District Five where, um, you know, Supervisor McPherson and Jenny Johnson were a major part of this implementation. And, you know, proud to partner with CAO Carlos Palacios, who's not here today to be here for the presentation, but has also been an important member of your operations board. So, um, so I've really had a lot, it's been very valuable to me as a member of the board. And thank my colleagues for allowing me the opportunity to represent us on this board and hope to continue to partner with you to work with Santa Cruz County in alignment with your goals so that we can continue to have, you know, affordable, clean energy for our residents. You know, I, we as a, as a board, we often get a lot of calls and questions around battery storage and around future projects. And, and I think when we go to public comment, we'll probably receive some of that. I want to just acknowledge that, you know, this item really is about the, you know, the broad presentation of the work of 3CE. And I thank you for bringing that here today and encourage you as a, yeah, as decisions may come before this board related to battery storage, to continue to share your information, to continue to be a partner to us as, as policymakers as we make decisions moving forward. Because that's really what we're going to be counting on you for. And then I think the last thing, and I've talked to you about this as a board member, but I'll just share for the public that, you know, reaching our climate energy goals, it's, it's different for different people, right? It's, it's a lot easier for some folks who live in more urban environments where, you know, car charging options are plentiful and power outages are not very often, right? It's a lot easier to contribute to those energy goals. And, you know, for residents in my district, in a more rural area, it's, it's more difficult. And I think that, you know, it's, it's my job and I hope to continue to work with you to help bring all Californians, all folks in this region along with these climate, climate energy goals. And we're going to have to work harder to meet people where they are, given the limitations of their geographic region. And so that's something that I'm representing as a member of the board. So, um, with that, that concludes my comments and just thank you again so much for being here.
Thank you. I want to thank you guys for the presentation as well and for all the work that you guys do. So I want to thank our CAO Carlos Palacios, Supervisor Martinez for her work and dedication on the board and her predecessor Supervisor McPherson as well and Judy Johnson and everyone in 3CE, I think. I want to thank you guys for really creating a more sustainable and equitable communities in, in our districts, in our region, actually. I think, you know, it's important to all of our communities to reduce our carbon footprint. And so, you know, I think that, uh, I really appreciate all the work, of course, in my district that, that has been done, taken place. I appreciate the solar, uh, the charging stations at Tabasa Gardens, for example. And I look forward to a lot more projects like this, uh, working with Eden, working with the Medpin to continue projects with, with folks that would not necessarily turn to an electric car, but I was happy to pass by Tabasa Gardens to see that there was actually a little Nissan there charging at the station. So I'm happy to see that and I would, I'd like to see more of that, right? In our communities of color. So thank you. With that, we're going to take it out to the public. Clerk. Due to the consent agenda lasting almost two hours, we make public comment to one minute and we do have closed session at 12. We do have closed session at 12. Thank you.
Wow, I may not be as nice as I try to be. Going to quote this, "The world is not to be put in order. The world is in order. It is for us to put ourselves in unison with this order." William Hicks, you know, he spoke differently to crowds of people than he went on the radio. Because when he spoke on the radio, he didn't give a shit if you hated him for the rest of your life. Because he wanted to wake you up to what's going on. I could say something slightly mean that you guys all sound smarter the less that you say. Because oh my God, the public debate of what you guys have presented would be so easy to present ulterior other motives. This is ridiculous. It is sad. It is depressing. The film Idiocracy in 2525, I think it was mimicked from when I was in high school. It is certainly right here in this room. So there you go, 52 seconds.
So that's not really fair to change it to one minute at the last minute. Rob, Sophia, thank you for being here today. Climate change, climate change is what's driving all this, right? And we all know it's carbon dioxide, greenhouse gases, right? What if that's not true? What if the whole basis of that is not true? What if that's just one of the lies that's being told to us? Has anyone investigated weather modification? What would happen if we had zero weather modification occurring? This has been going on since the 50s and it's well documented. Google weather modification patents and you'll see all the patents come up. The United States government used it in the Vietnam War. It's very, it's common knowledge. So once we get rid of the weather modification, then we know what's actually causing our climate change. Why are we so dependent upon renewables? If we didn't depend on renewables, we wouldn't need the battery energy storage. I was in Copenhagen, they burned trellis to generate their electricity. They removed the pollutants from the smoke. It releases steam into the environment. They put a snow, a ski ramp on the top of this building. Why aren't we being creative and having other sources of energy that don't require this battery image, energy storage? Plus, we need to be telling people about the risk when you give people credit.
Thank you. Ma'am, please come up to the dials if you're going to speak. This is a presentation and it's not a hearing.
After all that, I'm Judy Myers up here again. And I'm the one who handed out the thing about the alternative energies that are actually being utilized by central coast community energy, including the three long duration flow battery projects. And I would like to ask the presenters, um, how are those in the standing of your context of what you're discussing today? Because it says, uh, these are successful ways of storing energy. And the long term, you know, these long duration flow battery projects were not even mentioned in your presentation. Could you please address that within the context of what you're considering for the future?
Thank you. Well, that's it to do it after the public comment.
Hi, I have some, some really simple comments because I have a simple brain. We are, 3CE is taking advantage of a business opportunity to sort of use arbitrage and use more efficient methods of creating energy, lowering our bills. PG&E is getting less money, but they own the distribution infrastructure. How do we make sure that they continue to maintain this infrastructure? If we take money away from them, are they just going to increase the distribution cost of our bills and have a, a net neutral effect on the consumer?
Becky Steinbruner, I received a mailer that showed the comparative cost of energy from 3CE and PG&E and they're virtually the same. I am urging people to opt out today of 3CE because today is the first day that 3CE has admitted that they do have lithium best storage investments. People have been coming to their meetings for weeks after the Moss Landing fire. And it was not until the first mission on the environment that it became clear that 3CE is heavily invested in the Clearway Home and Best Lithium Ion Project in Moss Landing, a new 750 megawatt lithium in Moss Landing. What an insult, what an insult. And until 3CE is willing to place a moratorium on all lithium energy storage, I'm urging people to opt out because this is disgusting and they're not paying attention to the people's risks and safety. to the people's risks and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Call in user one, your microphone is now available.
First of all, you need to have the other side presented with equal time. You just spent about a half hour on lies and deception and with my understanding of it. And it's like having the tobacco industry blotting their product or the nuclear power industry saved, clean, cheap. And then we have the Fukushima, Three Mile Island, Chernobyl, et cetera disasters. This is a toxic industry and you need to have equal time presentation exposing that. One source of information is Renentum's FoghornExpress.substack.com. And an article made from Farm to Fork, how contamination in Moss Landing threatens every dining.
Tim, your microphone is now available.
Thank you so much. So anyways, uh, just thinking about this big picture here, it's a fine balancing act with regards to energy. Our food, our land, our water, all of our wineries, our agriculture, that's where your real value is. And if that is destroyed and we're all more worried about getting prostate cancer or cervical cancer from eating a strawberry or something, that's not too good. That's not a good position to be in. So, you know, I'm not entirely against these battery technologies, but placement is critical. Yeah, I don't think this sort of stuff should be in our community. It's not the right spot for it because our water and our food is of most value to all of us and your community brings in all this revenue, but it's also important for the entire country. So I think everyone needs to sit down and rethink about this. Thank you so much. You take it easy.
Diane, your microphone is now available.
All right. I'm opposed to the three CE and the county's goal to be 100% renewable by 2030. This aggressive timeline is prohibiting the people in the county decision makers the time needed to research alternative lithium, non lithium batteries for use in our county. Also, three CE is investing in lithium batteries for new best projects they're involved in. And due to the highly hazardous profile of lithium to people in the ecosystem, I'm concerned that this toxic prone technology is being allowed to be used. I encourage the board to take bold action to research and find that non lithium battery technology be the choice for battery energy storage in all proposed sites in Cal, in Santa Cruz County. Extend the 2030 unnatural manmade deadline to allow for time needed to secure a truly safe battery technology for it. The data center, data center industry is already moving away from lithium technology to one that's less fire prone. Do it for us. Thank you.
Call in user ending in four, three, six. Your microphone is now available.
Hello, can you hear my mic?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I just actually wanted to know about the item eight, if that, if that public comment is going to be heard before or after the 12 o'clock closed session. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Is that it? There's no more further comment?
Further speakers.
So again, this is not a hearing. There's no vote today. It's a presentation from three CE to the board, but I will allow, you know, the, some of the questions to be answered, especially the first two good questions that they had. So, yeah.
I captured at least one to address Ms. Myers, the question regarding the vanadium long duration storage batteries. I did talk about those. Those are the 32 megawatts of vanadium flow batteries. That contract was agreed to, I believe in 2020 or 2021. And as I shared earlier, I believe is significantly at risk. That technology is not viable currently by this developer. There may be opportunities in the future. The other question, and maybe it's for a clarification, um, three CE doesn't have any projects in Santa Cruz County. We're not affiliated with any projects that are being considered in Santa Cruz County. Our projects are largely throughout the, the state. The vanadium batteries were in the city of Gonzalez. We're still looking at trying to make a project work at that site. Those are currently only local projects, but local projects do leave to the ability for economic development to be able to serve additional manufacturing and new businesses to help grow our ability to serve customers in our area. So we'll continue to look at trying to bring generation closer to where load is as part of our mission.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think we're done with the presentation, but you could speak offline to, to folks from three CE. So the next, let me speak with the county council. Is it all right if we go into 1215 and try to do this item 45 minutes or less?
Yeah, it's up to the board. We can, we, we can, we can, you could break for lunch and close session early now or, you know, you could, you could hear this next item and then we can go in at 1230.
I think it's better if we move along. The next agenda item is number eight, hold the public hearing to approve a proposed resolution to delist the Redman Hirohara House from the San Cruz County Historic Inventory, approve the sequin notice of exemption and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Mark Conley, Principal Planner, Matthew Sun, Planner for, for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Mark Conley, Principal Planner with CDI. Great to see all of you this morning. To my right is Matthew Sun, the Principal Resource or Senior Resource Planner with CDI. And what we have for you this morning is the delisting of the Redman Hirohara House in South County, which the house was once a very significant example of a Victorian style architecture early on in this area and site of some significant events that happened. However, as time has passed, despite numerous efforts and a lot of time and even the creation of a foundation to preserve it, those preservation efforts have failed and the building has deteriorated to the point of really not being sustainable any longer. Professional reports have substantiated this and even to the point of it being a life safety hazard. So, uh, pursuant to our code, the delisting comes to the board without a stop to the planning commission. So it comes straight to the board after a recommendation from the Historic Resources Commission. So on February 10th, the Historic Resources Commission, the HRC, as you'll hear them referred to today, unanimously forwarded a recommendation to the board to delist and rezone this property. So with that, I will turn it over to Matthew for the presentation on how we got here. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. The agenda for today, history of the Redman Hirohara House, the county delisting requirements, chapter 1642, what happens next, and summary of recommended actions. The Redman Hirohara House is one of the county's most elaborate historic structures. Unfortunately, the house has deteriorated to such an extent that it is no longer restorable because of its advanced decay and lack of funds to restore. No work has been done to maintain this building since the mid 1980s. This Victorian house was designed and built by architect William Weeks in 1897 for James Redman, a Poharo Valley sugar beet farmer who passed away in 1921. In 1937, it was sold to Katsumi Tao, a naturalized citizen and brother-in-law of Mitoshi Hirohara. Mr. Tao sold the property to Mitoshi's son, Fumio Hirohara, in 1940 for $10. The Fumio was 16 years old at the time and a naturalized citizen. The Redman Hirohara farmstead was a complex that included a house and a barn. The house has been on the National Register of Historic Places since 2004. The barn, which is no longer on site, included a living unit prior to the war and was expanded post-war to house returning Japanese families with roots in the Poharo Valley. In 20, in 2005, the property was sold to the Redman Hirohara Foundation, a nonprofit that placed the house on the National Register of Historic Places. And through the efforts of the Redman Hirohara Foundation, the house was listed on the National Register Historic Places and is ranked National Register One or NR1. A preservation plan was to transform the house into a visitor and cultural education center. As a result of the unsuccessful capital campaign in 2009, the foundation filed bankruptcy. The house went through foreclosure and the property was then sold. In 2015, the property was purchased by the current owner, Elite Development of Watsonville, a farming and land development company. County Code chapters. County Code Chapter 1642. As indicated in the staff report, per County Code Section 1642, which contains the county's historic preservation codes, a special inspection report was prepared by the county building inspector that concluded that the condition of the structure is uninhabitable and dangerous because of its deteriorated condition. Also, per the code, an historical documentation report was prepared by an architectural consultant. This report states that the house has been vacated since 1986 and subsequently has been subject to physical deterioration and repeated vandalism over the years. This report provides information that supports the claim that preservation of the Redman Hirohara House is not feasible due to the deteriorated condition of the structure. That is the result of decades of deferred maintenance, extended vacancy, vandalism and loss of its historic setting due to the closely adjacent commercial developments on Beach Street to include two gas stations, a hotel and industrial buildings. Both reports are included in your staff report. County Code also requires that provision shall be made to preserve the historic values of the structure by documentation and or preservation of artifacts and building materials. Lastly, County Code Chapter 1642 requires that the structure be offered to the general public for removal or dismantling for salvage. After board approval to delist the Redman Hirohara House, staff will conduct the following. Firstly, record the sequin notice of exemption with county clerk for the California Environmental Quality Act. Secondly, submit the resolution to the Office of Historic Preservation for their review and action to delist the Redman Hirohara House from the California Register of Historic Resources and the National Register of Historic Places. Thirdly, once a demolition permit is applied for by the property owner, the property owner will offer the Redman Hirohara House to the general public for removal or dismantling for salvage by means of at least two display ads and a paper of local circulation in Santa Cruz County. Four, prior to demolition, the property owner will engage the services of an architectural historian to preserve the historic values of the structure by documentation and or preservation of artifacts and building materials. So a summary of recommended actions. And in closing, the full recommendations are in your staff report. We present the following recommended actions, conduct the public hearing for delisting, adopt the, the delisting resolution. Thirdly, approve the notice of exemption. Fourth, direct staff to submit the resolution to the state for their use in delisting. Number five, direct staff to assist property owners with the ads. And number six, direct staff to assist property owner with preserving historic values of the house. This concludes our presentation and we can answer any questions.
With that, you know, this is a public hearing. It is a presentation. This one, we're going to take a vote on. And please don't interrupt while they're doing the presentation or the hearing. I'll turn it over to the public to comment on this item.
Chair, my apologies.
Please excuse me. I was born in Wichita, Kansas, but I celebrate my second birthday in Watsonville. And my public participation was in 1980 to 1986 to be on the Sacramento County Commission for the Status of Women. And I was representing all the Methodist women in Sacramento County. It was a privilege. But I apologize that I haven't kept aware of what this was going on. And my, so I don't want something to be neglected or ignored that because of my not participating as a good citizen, I would like to ask for a postponement until the September board meeting. The American Association of University Women is very active in all the states of historical preservation. And some of my dear friends, fellow U M members in Sacramento are an authority on this. And I do want to consult them because I would have been part of that committee, guys, continued living in Sacramento. Because I think there, the use of the concept of renovation and restoration has been kind of commingled because apparently there was an attempt to restore this for something like a bed and breakfast or holding wonderful things there. But there's the dimension of education. Although I graduated from the University of the Pacific, I took my first three units at Cabrera, beginning English and the next summer, uh, general psych. So six of my 124 undergraduate units were right here in this county. And I think one of the things I did, my, I was the first speech therapist at Woodbridge School District, K through eight school at 22. At 23, I was the first speech therapist for Roseville and the other high school and Lincoln High School. So I've been in education. And, um, one of the things I did, my, what was?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Becky Steinbruner, I also ask you to postpone this. We only have to look to the Emma Prech Farm Park in San Jose to see the value of leaving important structures and farms and heritage available and accessible to the public to see why the Redman Hirohara House should not be delisted. I have contacted, and, and I will say that it has gone to its demo, uh, its degraded state because your board refused to take action to adopt a demolition by neglect ordinance. It's on you too, that it looks the way it does. And I am upset that the, it was the property owner who has come to the Historic Resources Commission to ask them to delist it. Well, you know why? And they say, well, it's lost historic contacts because of the new hotel behind it. How did that happen? Who approved that project? And all you have to do is go to Sacramento to see where historic buildings are nestled in among the, the new, to see there is value in historic preservation. Please do not delist this. I have corresponded with Mr. Paul Ling, Lingman from National Parks, and there was a very specific process. The property has ceased to meet the criteria for listing the national register because the qual, qualities which caused it to be originally listed have been lost or destroyed. They have not been lost. They have not been destroyed. And the building inspector did not go inside. He merely walked around and said, it's not habitable. Well, that's not the question. The question is structural integrity. This is historic preservation and your board needs to also, which the Historic Resources Commissioner did not even look at, was the, the doctoral dissertation of Mr. Jake Stone of 2024.
Thank you.
From people delisting the house. If the Japanese interned.
We have a speaker that you wish to speak to. We have a speaker behind you that'd wish to come back. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Larry Hirohara. No relationship to the Pet Redmond Hirohara, but I'm involved with historic preservation in Salinas. And we're, we're facing some of the same dilemmas of a red tag and a potential demolition of historic buildings. And it's always a crucial, in my opinion, an issue where we, some of this may be based on one opinion and maybe a second opinion maybe would be appropriate. As you well know and has been presented, it's a very historic building. And I think it's something that reserves extreme consideration for continuation. Thank you.
If there's no one here in the public, would you like to see if there's anyone in online?
Yes, Chair. Call in user four three six, your microphone is now available.
So, good afternoon, my name is Eloise Jimm. And I'm also like Larry Hirohara from Salinas Historic Resources Board. And the Redmond Hirohara Queen and Victorian is the last remnant of a large Victorian estate in a rural setting, which in itself is a historic accolade. To delist it for the purposes of demolition is a travesty and should not have been recommended by the Historic Commission. There are many examples of younger buildings and landmarks that are not being restored and rehabilitated. So the argument that it's beyond restoration is wrong. Greedy real estate moguls want to sweep down and extort precious materials like redwood and other Victorian embellishments from the wreckage. And that is something to be abhorred. William Weeks is a prominent architect and many of his buildings have been demolished in the name of progress. But those of us who know the intrinsic value of those buildings refuse to let the Victorian disappear from the California history. Please vote no and demand that the delisting be stopped so that viable restoration can be found and accomplished. Also, Mr. Hirohara is right. Other valuable resources will be targeted in the area if you allow this to happen. So thank you. Do not, it's delisting is in the front door reserved California founder and architect. Thank you.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for any comments or questions. Supervisor Cummings.
Thank you, Chair. It's a little bit of a tough one for me. Namely because I've seen certain circumstances where we've had historic buildings, where the property owners have allowed the buildings to deteriorate over time and then use that as a justification for demolishing what are known as historic buildings. For example, I used to live in Lava Hia and there was a bunch of folks who lived there and had housing that was relatively affordable. And over time, you know, the proposal was, well, Lava Hia has now deteriorated to the extent that we should delist it. And then part of it was saved, but the rest of it was converted to a hotel after many lawsuits. And it's just something for me that, you know, when, and for context, I'm just returning from Europe where you have buildings that are thousands of years old that have been used, that have been preserved to help, you know, preserve some of the history of those different cultures, you know, this building holds a lot of context. And I think on one hand, you know, maybe it was, and maybe this is a question, what was the historic context under which this was designated? Was it the architecture or was it the, the cultural significance of people being housed there after Japanese internment? I mean, that's a question I'll just ask real quick.
Both?
Okay. Because I feel that, you know, if that's the case, I mean, I think that, you know, there's, there's a lot of significance of this site. And, you know, when people come in and purchase properties where they obviously understand that this is a historic resource and it's a historic site, they should be taking that into account when purchasing the sites. And just looking at an aerial map, there's a lot, obviously, there's a lot of agricultural land around it. But, you know, I'm wondering if there may be, you know, some other opportunity to, if the person wants to develop on the property, rezoning some of the land, which I know can be extremely challenging. Personally, I'm really conflicted with, you know, us allowing our, some of our historic buildings to just deteriorate and then wiping that history away in our communities. And so those are all the comments I'm going to make today. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Serpa.
Thank you. So, and I'm sorry if you already addressed this, but years ago, I thought there had been sort of a foundation that was established to save the, save this piece of property. What happened to the, the money that had gone into that?
I don't know what happened to the money, but the organization, the Redmond Hirohara House Foundation, went bankrupt, property was foreclosed, it was sold, I think in 2009. And you recall that in 2008, the economy tanked. So whatever their work effort was, was for naught. The capital campaign didn't work. And I think in large part because of that economic downturn that stuck with us for a few years. And then nobody picked it up and made an issue of it, and here we are today.
So, you know, as I'm looking at these pictures, I see that, you know, there's areas of the roof that are missing. That, I mean, the house truly is falling apart. Is there any chance that, that it could be rehabilitated to its former glory?
I don't know about chances, but I can say with confidence that it would take millions of dollars to restore this. New plumbing, new electrical, new redwood wood to be used in its construction. No, no Home Depot materials sourcing from the Santa Cruz Mountain wood materials. It would be a huge effort, nothing is impossible. But here we are 40 years later. This thing or this house, this grand dame has been advertised to the world with thousands of people driving by every day. All it takes is one person say, I'd like to rebuild that. And it just never happened. And here we are.
Supervisor Martinez.
Just a question on kind of timing. What, why, why is this being presented to us today? Is it because the property owner has initiated this delisting or is asking us for the delisting because they have a future plan for it? Like, you know, it's been 40 years, what, why today?
Confluence of factors. The condition of the building and the Historical Resources Commission seeing this year after year after year and disappointed that nothing's happened. And they decided to pull the trigger and bring it to your attention. And you recall the Mills Act being presented to you earlier this year and that you passed that. Theoretically, if Mills Act had been around in 1980 or 1995 or whatever, this place could have been saved through the Mills Act. Can't guarantee that, but it's a tool that jurisdictions will use to help preserve their historical resources. Summarizes it.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree that it's a, you know, it's hard to make these kind of decisions, right? History is rich and valuable to our culture and to our community. And I want to name that and, and respect that. And also, you know, having been somebody who's been in, you know, public service and fundraising and, you know, efforts to bring the community together to do something. I, I just recognize how hard it is. And it sounds like there has been a deep effort to try to save this property, you know, there's been foundation, it's changed hands. There's been multiple people who said we can raise the money to get there. And at this point, you know, it's, it's, it's a sad situation. And also, you know, it's, it's, it's time to make a decision. So I appreciate, please, please don't interrupt during the.
Ma'am.
Please, please don't.
Don't interrupt. We're gonna have to have asked you to get escorted if keep interrupting this hearing.
So I want to thank you for the presentation and the work that you've done. And also thank the members of the Historic Resources Commission who have been working on this issue for quite some time. Thank you.
Supervisor, Supervisor Koenig.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate that we've arrived at this point. It's the inevitable result of years of inaction, as was said by staff. And I think that if this, this house was going to be saved, if there was enough community support to save it, then that would have happened by now. I mean, I, for one, grew up driving by those signs, save this old house. And it's too bad that the support wasn't there to make it happen. I think at this point, it's time to delist it. Ma'am, ma'am, stop interrupt, ma'am.
Ma'am, this is a hearing, stop interrupting. So, you know, I think that, do you have further comments?
No, I mean, if somebody showed up with a check today, that might change my mind. But given that we heard plenty of concern, but nothing that would actually change the equation. And as was said, this would cost millions just to keep it standing upright, let alone habitable.
Thank you. So there's been several times, you know, that the economy has been good during the last. When he, this discussion started in 98, 97. But there's been several times when the economy was good. And then there's been several times that there was a downturn. And no one came in to help save this house. And I read the articles, I went back and read the articles on the Aronian when this group formed. And unfortunately, several things that I read there, three, I guess, is they weren't able to raise sufficient, even sufficient money to make a dent. And second of all, it became too expensive in 2004 to even fix it. And then, then the organization that formed went bankrupt. There's no, going to be no magic bill, no magic, someone going to come in and give us a seven million dollars to fix the house, but you got to buy the property as well. And people don't look at that property and say, I'm going to pay seven million for that property and seven million for that land acreage that's there. But it is a difficult situation, as my colleagues have said. I think that the history that's there with the Japanese Americans that were interned and also that the owners there gave the opportunity to become sharecroppers in the Paharo Valley, not only the Japanese, but to Latinos. And so I think it's a rich in history. If there's any way that we can preserve anything that's there and hand it over to, I don't know, some folks like at the, the history folks here or the Japanese American Citizens League that they can retain. But I think first and foremost, I think that us as a county and the city of Watsonville is probably to share that story, preserve it, have it in the library and let people know about that history. But right now, people tell me, oh, is it by that haunted house? People think it's Halloween themed haunted house. You know, and I also really do have a fond, I guess, liking to architecture. And William Weeks presented the most beautiful houses in Watsonville. That being one of them, there's actually one on my street that is not on the historical list. But I'd hate to see that go away, both the history and the history of architecture here in the Paharo Valley. We're left at this difficult point. And I think that that's where the difficult decisions are made. So.
Yeah, one last question. If the board votes to delist it and at some point it's demolished and then a proposal for a new development comes forward, would there be an opportunity for the board as part of the development permits require that there's some type of plaque or memorial on site that's accessible to the public that kind of demonstrates the history of this house?
I think even before that, Mark Connolly, Principal Planner, it'll happen where there'll be photo documentation, placarding. And perhaps, and this will come out of the reports, perhaps to Chair Hernandez's point of maybe if there's something salvageable that can be turned over to a museum, we have those opportunities as well.
Supervisor Cummings also thinks like they're at the site to some sort of memorial or plaque, okay? Supervisor De Sera.
Also, one more question, just because it's delisted, potentially if somebody wanted to save it still, it could be done and relisted at some future point. So just because we're voting to delist it today doesn't mean we're going to demolish it tomorrow, correct?
Yes, and the county is not going to demolish it. It would be responsibility of the property owner with a demolition permit from the county.
Okay. And does the property owner know that, that this is before us today?
Yes, property owner is in the audience.
Oh, great. Okay.
Ma'am, this is a hearing, this is a hearing, ma'am. So with that, I'll turn to my members entertaining motion.
I'll move the recommended actions.
A second.
Question? We have a motion and a second motion from Supervisor Koenig, a second from Supervisor De Sera.
Supervisor De Sera. Regretfully, aye.
Supervisor Cummings.
No.
Supervisor Martinez.
Aye.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
And Supervisor Hernandez.
Aye. And so I want to make sure that we do get some of the statements that Supervisor Cummings had said about supporting some sort of memorial there, historical kind of placard or something like that.
Staff understands that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to. Next, we'll move to closed session. Ten minutes late, 12 minutes late.
Do you want to return at 1:30?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
We'll now resume this day's board meeting. We left off at number nine, but before that, we'll see if, check in with county council, see if there's anything that's reportable.
No, nothing reportable.
Okay. The next agenda item is number nine, hold the public hearing to consider an appeal of application two, four, one, five, four, five, zero, a minor land division and coastal development permit to demolish an existing single family dwelling and construct three new dwellings on each of the newly formed parcels located at two, two, seven, zero, two, East Cliff Drive, Santa Cruz. Assessors parcel number zero, two, eight, two, four, two, two, five, and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Nathan Macbeth, planner for the presentation. Wait, this is a, this is also a hearing, so we'll also hear from the applicant or appellant for 10, for 10 minutes, no more than 10 minutes. Okay.
Good afternoon, Nate Macbeth, Planning Department. The subject property is approximately 16,000 square feet in size and zoned. RM five, which is consistent with the parcel's urban medium designation. This is a location of the parcel here on the south side of East Cliff. This is the location of the parcel here, on the south side of East Cliff Drive, approximately 500 feet south of the intersection with 26th Avenue, kind of midway between 26th Avenue and Moran Lake, Popular Beach. Property fronts the beach. And the zoning is RM5, multifamily residential with a minimum 5,000 square foot parcel size. It's consistent with the urban medium general plan designation. It's in the Pleasure Point Combining District. And this is a proposal to demolish an existing two-story, single-family dwelling to divide the existing 16,000 square foot parcel into three parcels of approximately 925 square feet, 1,000 square feet, and a larger parcel of 11,000 square feet. Includes a 5,700 square foot common area. A multifamily common interest development is proposed on the newly formed parcels, consisting of three dwelling units and an ADU. Approximately 5,000 square feet of material would be excavated at the site for construction of subterranean improvements, including two of the proposed dwellings, an ADU, parking, and a courtyard. A two-story, single-family dwelling of approximately 6,000 square feet is proposed at the ground level, including a lap pool, hot tub, and patio. Miscellaneous site improvements include new drainage infrastructure, landscaping, new hardscape, subterranean storage, retaining walls are also proposed. The project is eligible for an SB478, which allows for increased floor area ratio up to 100% and some relief from law coverage, where that would otherwise preclude the allowed floor area ratio where all other site and development standards apply under that provision of state law. The project requires a minor land division, coastal development permit, large dwelling, a large dwelling, exception to the Pleasure Point Design Criteria, site development permit, and conditional use permit. Just a brief chronology, actually rather detailed. The application was originally submitted in November of 2024. The fees were paid in December. Determination regarding the project's incompleteness was rendered on the 27th of December. That determination was appealed and heard by the Planning Commission on February 12th. The determination by the Planning Commission was appealed and heard as a jurisdictional appeal before your board, where your board declined to take jurisdiction of that appeal. Subsequent to the, that, on June 11th, after a duly noticed hearing and consideration of all the materials and public testimony, the Planning Commission denied application 241450 based on the findings contained in the staff report. On June 23rd, the applicant appealed the Planning Commission's action to your board. Today is a non-jurisdictional appeal of the Planning Commission's action to deny application 241450. As specified in the staff report, staff believes there's sufficient grounds to uphold the Planning Commission's action and to deny the applicant's appeal. No newer information has been submitted, and the project remains inconsistent with several codes and policies as outlined in the report. Just a brief show of the photos here from, a scene of the existing development, seen from the beach. We have, the frame to the lower left is up coast, looking back at the existing home, right out in front, and looking back up coast. What's notable about this photo is the proposed development, though visual simulations were not submitted for this particular project, the plans indicate that the proposed home would be situated further toward the revetment, the rock revetment in front of the base of the home, and would be much taller. This is a view of the home, existing home from East Cliff Drive. The lower frame, it looks like my arrow disappeared there, but it's just to the right of the red roof, looking down the long driveway at the home in the rear. And then the view from the north, or from the west, is obscured primarily by a large tiberous tree. This is the, let's see here. The Minor Land Division shows the 11,000 square foot parcels, larger parcel where the primary dwelling would be situated. The dark blue area is one of the subterranean parcels. Again, the 1,000 square foot area, orange, is another one of the subterranean homes. Shaded red area is the 5,000 square foot common area, which would serve all three parcels. The green area to the lower right denotes an existing driveway serving the parcel. It's approximately 15 feet in width, which is substandard for serving the number of parcels that are proposed. Again, the site plan, you can see the, to the left, the rock revetment that we saw in the visual, in the photo, site photo. And the, kind of the white area denotes the designated geologic setback as provided by the applicant. All development needs to be behind. And this shows a basic development proposed for the site. The, what's noted is the northern portion of the site, or it would be west in this case, the upper portion is encumbered by a view easement. So in that case, no development shall exceed four feet in height. These are the elevations, proposed elevations. Pleasure Point Design Exception is required for a reduction to the second floor setback on the south side. We see our, or sorry, on the east side, as shown in the south elevation, be the top right corner. The wall of that home is approximately five feet from the property line, so approximately five-foot encroachment on the second floor. Again, this is the view of the parcel. The upper west elevation shows the full view of the home and the subterranean area. The, from grade, the height of the home is approximately 27 feet, a little bit over. And as measured to the basement, it would be approximately 38 feet. In summary, the technical reports have not been accepted for this project, which is required by County Code Section 1610060. Newly formed parcels in a coastal hazard area are not allowed pursuant to our General Plan 6.2.17. Development seaward of the home will result in visual impacts inconsistent with General Plan Policy 5.1.7 and our coastal regulations found in County Code Section 1320. Findings therefore cannot be made to support the minor land division, coastal development permit, a large dwelling setback reduction for the pleasure point perception, and the conditional use, conditional in-site development permits. Staff has received late mail, and all of which is included in your packet, several members of the public, mostly neighbors, as well as the Coastal Commission, have expressed support for the staff recommendation before you. The applicant has also submitted correspondence, which raises issue, which continues to raise issues that have either already been addressed or analyzed in the staff report to the Planning Commission or a letter to your board. The only new issue raised by the applicant is with regards to the amount of time allotted for the applicant's testimony before the Planning Commission. I believe, to respond to that, I believe that the chairperson has the authority to set time for members of the public. And I believe the applicant received equal to, if not more, time than other members of the public. And I would defer to council as to whether or not the allotted time was sufficient. With that, it's recommended that you hold a public hearing to consider the applicant, the appeal of Planning Commission's action to deny application 241450, a proposal to divide approximately 16,000 square foot parcel into three parcels, construct a single-family dwelling on each of the newly created parcels at 22702 East Cliff Drive, determine that the project, proposed action is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, and deny application, deny the appeal of application number 241450, thereby upholding the Planning Commission's denial of the application. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
With that, we'll have the, with that, we'll have the applicant come up? And you'll be given 10 minutes?
Understood. Chair Hernandez, I do have a point of order question, if you don't mind. Will, will we also be allowed some time for rebuttal? No. So if we're going to use our 10 minutes, we need to reserve time for rebuttal? Is that how it works?
No, then it comes to the board.
So we have no opportunity for rebuttal?
Chair, if, if, if it's agreeable to you, you could have them do a seven-minute presentation and reserve three minutes for rebuttal at their, at their discretion.
Does that sound good?
It sounds like that's the best we're gonna get, so yes. So I do have a slide presentation that I'm told is ready for display on the board, and I hope nobody thinks me rude if I'm turning slightly sideways in order to read the board. Slides ready for presentation?
We're working on pulling it up. There appears to be an issue with the file type that was submitted. Chair and council, if the appellant has a laptop, we may need to revert to an alternate device setting where they can use the additional technological option that we had previously discussed.
I don't have a laptop, no.
Okay.
Okay, you know, if you don't have a laptop and we can't put your slides up on the screen, it sounds like you're gonna have to proceed unfortunately without your slides, unless you have hard copies that you could distribute to the board that the board could look at while you're speaking. And then we also need to adjust the clock to seven minutes, please?
Yes.
I, I don't have copies, and we received an email notification this morning with, it was unequivocal about the readiness of the staff to present these slides for my use at this hearing.
Okay.
Chair, do we have the ability to get IT in the room right now?
Juliette, can we make copies of the version that's, that we pulled up on another computer?
We can attempt that, yes.
Okay.
Why don't we take a five-minute break, Chair, so we can get these issues resolved and then come back? Does that make sense?
Some five minutes, and come back after we get the tech-
Recording stopped.
-solved.
For those of us joining online, we're now prepared-
Recording in progress.
We've resolved the technical issue. Thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. My name is John Flynn. I'm an attorney for the McDo'ns, and I'll be leading off in our presentation today. And as indicated earlier, we're gonna reserve three minutes for rebuttal. Can we go to slide one? Slide two, please. Okay, the request that we're making at the outset is that this matter be sent back to the Planning Commission so that the Planning Commission affords us our hearing rights in accord with the Planning Commission's own bylaws. Those bylaws were adopted and published by the Planning Commission in order to provide what they believe to be the process that is due the applicants. So if you don't get that, you're not getting the Planning Commission's due process, and we didn't get it. If, I don't know if you can see, well, you, I think you can all see what's on the screen. Under their bylaws, Section 11.3.4, applicant shall be given 10 minutes for their initial presentation. They gave us six. We had to beg, and we got eight. 11.3.7, applicant shall be provided five minutes for rebuttal. A lot of things were said about the project by some project opponents at the hearing that were misleading or simply false. And we needed and had the right to rebut those assertions under the published bylaws of the Planning Commission. And when we asked for the opportunity for rebuttal, because it was so important for us to respond to some of the things that were said that were untrue about the project, we were told, "No, no rebuttal." Now, one of the Planning Commissioners said, "Well, wait a second. It's my experience that we always afford rebuttal to the applicant." And the answer to that was, you see it there at the bottom of the screen, "I think the applicant got a total of eight minutes between the two of them. I think it's sufficient." That was the response, the totality of the response to our request to exercise our right to rebuttal. Our right to rebuttal was denied, and so we were asking on that basis alone. I've got other grounds that I'm gonna be talking about on the screens, but we would like you to send it back to the Planning Commission for a hearing in accordance with their own published and adopted bylaws, because it didn't happen. And if it didn't happen, we were denied due process in that hearing. Second, next slide, please. The Permit Streamlining Act, we've gone back and forth about the Permit Streamlining Act, and I'm not gonna say a whole lot more about the PSA issues, but according to the code, the PSA itself, the time for the 30-day clock to begin to run is from receipt of the application. There is nothing in the PSA about, no, it's not receipt of application, it's really when all the fees are paid. The argument that's been made by the staff is, "Well, if we start reviewing before we get all of our fees, then there's gonna be an unlawful gift to public funds." Well, that's not, that's not really true. The website or the Community Development and Infrastructure Department publishes a list of initial deposits for each type of planning application review that takes place. Just charge the applicant the initial deposit, and you can start the clock running. And there's a notification on the page that says, "Look, we, we might have to ask you for more money later on." That's fine. But that's not the way they did it. They refused to take any action until they get, they got all the fees, not just an initial deposit, but all the fees that they believed that they were due. So, as a result, there was a violation in our case of the PSA. But there's a big hole in your intake procedures that creates a significant vulnerability under the PSA. Under your procedures, your own intake procedures, if you submit your application, remember the key word is receipt under the PSA. remember the key word is receipt under the PSA. What the staff has done is set up a system so that they don't, they'll tell you when they're ready to receive the application. So if you're ready to receive or to submit, let's say on November 17th, they will let you know, okay, we'll open the portal in a week. There are no time constraints built into your intake procedure. It could be a week, could be two weeks, four weeks, four months, doesn't matter. It's when we receive and we'll let you know when we're ready to receive. That guts the Permit Streamlining Act, which is designed to do just the opposite. Not create indefinite delays, but to start that clock running right away and give the staff 30 days to make a completeness determination. Next slide, please. Okay. We told this to the planning commission, we're, we're telling you to, we're trying to do it in the, in the friendliest way possible, but this is necessarily a kind of a confrontational issue. 16.10.060A says, any required geologic soil or other technical report shall be completed, reviewed and accepted before any public hearing is scheduled and before any discretionary
Minute warning.
Or development, uh, application is approved or issued. There's been no accepted geo reports, so you can't have the hearing. In fact, you were, you were prohibited from even scheduling the hearing. The explanation for that given by Mr. Beemeth to the, uh, to the planning commission was, well, it's okay if you're gonna deny the project. But if, if you schedule the hearing based on the presumption that you're gonna deny the project, then the applicant's been denied due process to a hearing. Because the only outcome that can result if you schedule a hearing is a denial of the project. Next slide, please. All right, there's a dispute, uh, and I may have to take eight minutes and give two minutes to, for rebuttal, if that's all right. Um, there's a debate about whether we are allowed to take into consideration an existing revetment in the calculation of the 100 year setback. Under H1 of 16.10.070, you are allowed to, in fact, you are, um, H1 directs you to consider the existence of a revetment in calculating what the 100 year setback is. Obviously, the existence of a revetment is gonna make a major difference to where the setback is going to go. H1 has always been interpreted, interpreted by this county to mean
30 seconds.
You include consideration of the revetment. If you look at H7A, H7 incorporates all of H1. So the criteria in H1 are built into, I'm gonna cut into his time. In fact, we might even have to take the whole 10 minutes from me. Um, H7 incorporates by, in full, all of H1. That is, here's how you do it. If you want to know how to do it, look at H1. H7 reads demonstration by a full geologic report that each proposed building site on the parcel is not subject to any potential hazards and that each site meets the minimum setback given in subsection H1 of this section. So if you want to comply with H7, you must comply with H1. Subdivision B, however, says, well, the planning director, uh, can decide whether or not the site is gonna be safe and stable um, without consideration of the revetment. So in A, it says, you gotta consider the revetment. And in the very next subdivision, it says, if you do this, if you do it the way we tell you to do it, then the planning director is gonna tell you, you did it wrong. That's an inconsistency from which is, it is impossible to rescue this, this ordinance.
Final one minute warning.
What's that?
Final one minute warning.
Okay.
53 seconds remaining.
Okay. So next slide, please. Um, how the setback is calculated is irrelevant because of SB 478. Putting aside where the setback is, is required either under H1 or H7, assuming that you can comply with both. How the setback is calculated is really determined by SB 478, which is codified at 65913.11 of the government code. The county is barred from imposing any design standards that would preclude achieving the 1.0 FAR floor area ratio that is guaranteed by subdivision A of 65913.11.
That is time.
Thank you.
Now take it to the public to see if anyone wishes to address this on this item. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, supervisors. Um, hadn't planned on coming today, but I got worried that you might believe some of this stuff. Um, I'm Mike Guth. I used to come to this room every week whenever there was a land use item going back 30 years. I was a two-term housing commissioner. I was a two, two-term planning commissioner. Uh, I worked, I live in this neighborhood that this project's in, but I also do work up and down the state on coastal development issues and mostly coastal protection issues. There's nothing to any of these assertions you're hearing, and it's discouraging to me to know that this development team has emailed so many people in the community trumpeting all these baseless accusations. There's nothing wrong with what staff has done here at each step. The permit streamlining thing can be dispensed with like that. County code is crystal clear. It says you gotta, and I can't believe we're discussing it after you already declined the appeal on that a couple of months ago. Um, but here it comes again. Actually, this application be, should, should be dismissed for failure to put in required application parts. Shouldn't even gotten a hearing. But you have a clear code for permit. When, when you get your, when the clock starts on your permits, clear county code wasn't violated. If you think that's a problem with Permit Streamlining Act, when that code was put in, you challenge it under California government codes at court. You don't do an administrative hearing on a permit where they use that. Anyway, it all goes on and on. Our code is crystal clear that you cite new developments. Rearword of 100 year erosion line, crystal clear, despite what those selective excerpts showed. I will say that working a lot of, I've looked at every coastal development permit package since I quit being a planning commissioner five years ago. If anything, staff goes out of their way to accommodate developers, but not this kind of outrageously outlandish set of proposals that are so non-compliant. By the way, when, when your board asked county council a month ago if they believe if, if we could defend the Permit Streamlining Act issue, I couldn't have been more proud of the way he stood and said that he has confidence in the county position. I hope we have the same confidence in our position in the staff report today because it's fully merited. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Yes, Chair, we have speakers online.
Oh, we got one more in public here.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Amber Jones. Myself and Pat O'Neill are the neighbors adjacent to the applicant. We strongly support upholding the planning commission's denial of application 241450. The letter from Nosman on March 13th, 2025, which states, "Our application for the McDo'ne development project will be deemed approved if the board does not act within 60 days from the date our clients provide public notice, prompted the action of denial taken by the planning commission." "The public notice we received from the McDo'ns was postmarked on May 28th, 2025, marking the start date Nosman is referencing." "The architect submitted the application without including standard items for an application to be considered complete. "The pertinent lorry items required for completeness, he instead sought waivers for in a failed incompleteness determination appeal to the planning commission and board." "In addition, the architect left out pertinent information on his building plans like defining what the setback numbers are on a second story and is using ChatGPT to formulate his assertion statements and rebuttals found on page 749 of your packet." "The applicant purchased this property for a price that reflected the restricted development for his parcel. "He was aware that the parcel is restricted due to a view shed easement, is located in the Pleasure Point Special District and is on a coastal bluff without a CDP granting continued maintenance and monitoring to the revetment." "The geo report he submitted with his application does not take into account the geological changes that have happened since 2021 to his bluff top." "His geo report states in his development application, there are not geological changes since 2021, but at the same time, he has recently submitted a CDP application to Coastal Commission stating there have been changes and damages from the storms in 2022 or 2023 and 2024 and is requesting work repair to his damaged revetment." "The applicant is trying to push the proposed massive development through bypassing all the requirements, processes, reviews and procedures required for a development such as this. The project is inconsistent with the local coastal program."
Thank you.
Seeing no further speakers, um, in the room, I'll move to the online speakers. Quinn, your microphone is now available.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for taking the time today. Um, I want to touch on a, a couple of things that I think may, um, have been glossed over, um, from the, the presentation, um, and, and also fully support everything that Mike Guth has said and Amber as well. Um, so the, the, as Mike mentioned, uh, this has already been brought up before you and, um, has been voted against and, and that uh, completeness or the, the timing of the application is proceeding through the courts. This is just a determination on the completeness of the application despite applicant's attempt to, um, confuse those issues. And the other point I wanted to make is just in terms of their initial, uh, discussion about timing. That was not something that was brought up in front of the planning commission. So at the very minimum, it was waived at the time. Um, but regardless, there was a full discussion of the, uh, the application at that point. There was a, um, several significant and, um, frankly, quite concerning issues in terms of completeness with this application, including the geologic report and other issues. Um, especially given, as, uh, Amber has pointed out, significant issues with the, the bluff and the geologic area. Um, and I also just wanted to point out that, um, the, the government code, um, that applicant's attorney has referenced doesn't say that, um, the, the agency can't impose restrictions. It just says it can't impose a floor area ratio that's less than a certain amount. That has nothing to do with the other, uh, potential regulations. Um, and I encourage you to deny this project. Once again, it is not complete. Thank you.
Callie, your microphone's now available.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. My name is Callie. Good morning, supervisors. Um, I live in the neighborhood near the proposed project, uh, 22702 East Cliff. And I'm here to express my concerns about the current application and to support the recommendation to deny the permit. Like many of my neighbors, I'm concerned that the information provided in the application is incomplete. Without a proper geologic report, it is impossible to fully understand the potential risks and implications of this project, especially on a coastal bluff that they're trying to build an underground bunker. That's like, the coastal bluff that's already eroding is bizarre. We all love this beach and it is, and its unique geology deserves careful consideration. We also believe it's important for the community to be involved in this process. We're eager to work with the applicant to find a solution that works for everyone, but a neighborhood meeting and consultation have not yet happened. Community input is invaluable and we believe it's a vital step before this project can move forward. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to making thoughtful decisions on behalf of our community. I hope you will support the recommendation to deny the permit until these critical issues are addressed. And I also just appreciate all the county staff working tirelessly on this issue, even though it's like become such a headache. You guys are like heroes. Okay. Thank you. Goodbye.
Joe, your microphone's now available.
Uh, hi, uh, my name's Joe Press. I, uh, live to a lot, two parcels away from the subject property. I'm a retired, uh, 45 years, uh, uh, general contractor. And, uh, the, the applicant's premise that anything would happen in the permit process until the check clears. Having personally dealt with a thousand permits in my 45 years, it all started with payment. I think that's a bit silly. Secondly, uh, denial of an applicant's, uh, uh, I'm an applicant, uh, because, uh, there's something grossly, uh, wrong with the application, like a narrow driveway, narrow driveway being too narrow or setbacks being incorrect. I think, you know, it's actually a service to the applicant to deny them before they spend $15,000 on a geological study. I think the county's doing a courtesy to the applicant. Uh, both of those things just, uh, just seem logical to me. Uh, I am totally behind Mike and Amber and the rest of my neighbors. Uh, from the beginning of this process, I questioned multiple times at hearings like this why the applicant didn't meet with the neighbors. I think that tells all. Thank you.
Avery, your microphone's now available.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Avery Olson. Many of my neighbors and family members have already spoken a bit about the impact of the proposed development on the property next door to our home at 2-2700 East Cliff Drive. I've been visiting our beach house for 60 years. Ever since my parents bought the house in the 1960s, it's been a sanctuary for my family, most especially, most especially my father and, and later years, my mother. We have a long history in the neighborhood and a commitment to maintaining the serenity in the area that the natural beauty of the coast offers and that the community supports. My own family enjoyed it when our kids were young and we are just now entering a new phase where my young adult children, nieces and nephews can start taking advantage of the house more regularly. In fact, we did have my, one of my brother's daughter living there full time a few years. And our hope is to spend a significant amount of time there in the coming years. Throughout our 60 years of ownership, we've seen many owners move in and out of the property in question, and we've experienced a few remodels. My concern with the current proposed plan is the impact of the cliff and the potential for further erosion to the bluff. We have already witnessed years of natural erosion. If you look at the original deed and the maps, the cliff goes so much farther than it does now. And the rock right in front of the property is just half the size of what it once was. We have seen staircases wash away and currently deep sea caves exist on both sides of the cove that contribute to the ongoing depletion of the beach. We have started to use alternate routes to access the beach, the one at the end of 26th, which also has been pushed back and another one by the lagoon. There are fundamental errors in the geological report, which the county should fully re, review through a request for a full report under 162115. This will allow for a more extensive analysis of the geological hazards and the potential changes in the landforms. It will also provide the chance to assess compliance with the Coastal Commission and a lot more time to further investigate and interpret the code. I deeply appreciate your time. Thank you kindly.
Bill, your microphone is now available.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Bill Parkin. I represent the Walker family. I'm the counsel for the Walker family. Um, the application is incomplete. I don't think I have a, I'm sure of that in my mind. Um, the applicant sought to have the application deemed approved and therefore, uh, was, and then they had said that the county needs to, well, the county needs to uh, hold a hearing in order, once an applicant asserts it's deemed approved. Nevertheless, the county complied with their request to hold a hearing and the applicant still hasn't provided the requested information. Oddly, the applicant also argues that the county could not schedule a public hearing absent acceptance of the geologic report. Mr. Flynn stated today that you're not even, you're even prohibited from having a hearing. But the applicant also wants to send back to the commission for a hearing. And so I admire your staff. They're the utmost professionals, but at the end of the day, I would lose my mind over this, the inconsistencies of the applicant's arguments. There are no visual simulations from the beach. As a, as a staff report to the planning commission stated, the project does not comply with the county's large dwelling design guidelines, county design review ordinance, design criteria development and development within the coastal zone. And an exception for the, of the pleasure point design criteria do not apply. Notably, a new home will be closer to the bluff than the existing home. So, and by the way, the constitutional takings arguments that the applicant has consistently made are not credible. Uh, imposing conditions regarding Imposing conditions regarding setbacks from a coastal bluff do not result in the taking under Nolan versus the California Coastal Commission, and this certainly does not violate the principles in the Penn Central case. Thank you for your consideration, and I and I respectfully request that you deny the appeal. Thank you.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
With that, I'll bring it back to the to the board. Supervisor Koenig.
Thank you, Chair. Just a few questions. First, I'm wondering if county council could address this issue the applicant raised about the right to rebuttal and the the fact that the planning commission didn't follow the by, its own bylaws in having the hearing in the first place.
So what's the question?
Well, I mean, is, do you see any issue in that? I mean.
So bylaws are not laws, right? They're more, they're more equivalent to to club rules, essentially. A violation of bylaws, however, could be used as evidence that due process was not afforded, that somebody was not provided with the ability to speak and and state their case. In this case, a fact finder ultimately would have to review the record and determine whether or not enough time was given in conjunction with the written materials for them to effectively state their case. And that's a question of of what if? A very conservative reading would be that, hey, the bylaws exist there for a reading, for a reason, and the planning commission should have followed their bylaws. And therefore, we're going to send it back to the planning commission and tell them to do it over again and follow their bylaws. That's a conservative reading, and it's going to be up to your board to make that motion or not make that motion. If you do not send it back to the planning commission, I imagine that this will be added to the list of things that we're already litigating in federal court. So you have an opportunity to either eliminate that issue through another hearing before the planning commission, which means that it may come back to your board, depending on what the planning commission does with it, or to go ahead and just rule on what's in front of you today.
Gotcha. So in your view, the bylaws not confer some fundamental right to rebuttal to the applicant?
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think it can be, it can be, it can be distilled down to be that black and white.
Okay. Obviously, there are a lot of other issues with the application. It was said numerous times by members of the public. But I mean, my understanding is there's there's simply no argument here that the application is incomplete. It is, right? I mean, we don't have a neighborhood notification and meeting. We don't have visual simulations of the, from the beach. We don't have a site plan. We don't have preliminary stormwater management report. We don't have a will, will serve letters. We don't have a shadow plan. We don't have lighting plan. I mean, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Right. There was some suggestion that SB four seventy eight gives the applicant some specific rights. I mean, my understanding, as was said, that that would be a floor area ratio of one. So I mean, in theory, with a complete application, does that mean the applicant could, I mean, ignore our height restrictions and go to, I don't know, sixty feet or something in order to achieve a far of one? I mean, of course, it's a unique site. There's a ease, a view easement on half of it. And so that could result in a taller building in order to achieve a far of one. But and in this case, the applicant's suggestion going down, maybe county council could, could discuss, like, what rights are actually conferred through SB four seventy eight and how have we considered them here?
Sure. Natalie Kirkish, County Council's Office. So SB four seventy eight does state that a local agency may not impose a lot coverage requirement that would physically preclude a housing development project that meets specified criteria from achieving the floor area ratio of one, as you mentioned. I, this is specific to lot coverage requirements. It does not apply to every development standard that would limit the size of the project.
Right. So, I mean, of course, the geology being the other major issue here and the presence of coastal hazards, right? That doesn't all just go out the window because of SB four seventy eight.
Agreed. Those are not lot coverage requirements.
I mean, obviously, a pretty significant proposal here. I mean, to excavate five thousand cubic yards. I mean, would our code support this level of excavation and the development of subterranean structures like this next to, in a coastal bluff in any scenario?
I think that's a question maybe staff could answer. Yeah.
The grading plans are reviewed by our environmental planning staff. And I believe we do have representative from our environmental planning group here today, and they could speak to the the amount of grading.
Good afternoon. I'm Craig Stewart. I'm the county geologist. So when we're thinking about grading, grading volumes, we're looking at, you know, if we're looking at something like five thousand cubic yards, we're looking at different administrative to public processes for evaluating that amount of grading. So if it's under a thousand cubic yards, we can do it ministerially through a building permit. If it's one thousand to eight thousand cubic yards, it's usually a staff report. We have to prepare specific findings about the impacts of that grading. If it's over eight thousand cubic yards, it's going to public hearing, a planning commission level review. And so that would be evaluated during the overall review. But we would need all the information, all technical reports to be accepted in order to cross that with our required findings in the code and then make that and present that as a staff report.
Okay, so it could potentially be a pathway to excavation of this level in the right, under the right circumstances, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't preclude it.
Okay, but yeah. All right. I mean, I've walked this beach many times, and there's an extensive sea cave forming here. I mean, it's certainly. I don't know why anyone would want to do this. I mean, I've sat at Moran Lake and watched the waves roll around the house, like roll around the like garden atrium windows of this house. I mean, it's been four feet high at least, all above the bluff top. I mean, what you're proposing here is basically a giant bathtub come the next high, high winter. I mean, so frankly, I mean, I hope the applicant has actually been to this site and understand. I mean, I'd invite them to come, that the the owners of this site actually come during the next King Tide event and understand exactly what's involved here. This would be a horrible investment decision. I mean, someone mentioned the fact that, like, you know, we should really give them advice that fifteen feet is too narrow for a driveway. Yeah, and excavating a coastal bluff to this extent with this level of hazard present is also a really bad idea. I mean, let's just be frank. I understand you guys are looking for, I mean, I appreciate the the application team in pointing out ways that our our county process could be better. And I'm always open to those discussions. And I think that in many ways that you, you've continued to push us to be better, and we're getting there. I don't, still don't see a pathway or to approve this application with clearly so much of our list of required information being absent. And then just from a really what's good for the community or frankly, for the applicant here, I don't see any reason to approve this. So I'm happy to move the staff recommendation.
Second.
A motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from Supervisor Martinez, if we can take a roll call vote. Excuse me. It's done. We're moving on. No special request. Supervisor Cummings. Supervisor Serpa.
I'm abstaining.
Good. If we can take a roll call vote.
I'm so sorry. I misheard Supervisor.
I thought we were doing a roll call vote. I'm abstaining from this vote. Thank you.
Supervisor Cummings. Martinez.
Hi.
Koenig.
Hi.
Hernandez.
Hi. Motion passes with an abstention. Supervisor Cummings. The next item will be taken on by Vice Chair Supervisor Martinez. I have something that I have scheduled that I need to be in South County, and I'm twenty minutes late.
Thank you, Chair. We are now moving on to item number eleven. Hold a Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act. Wait, are we on number eleven?
Vice Chair Martinez, I believe it's item ten.
Thank you. Well, I've already messed up my role as chair. Let's start again. Let's see, we're going to move on to item number ten. Hold a public hearing to consider approving in concept an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Cruz, amending Santa Cruz County Sections thirteen ten three one two, thirteen ten three two two, thirteen ten three three two, thirteen ten three five two, thirteen ten three six two, thirteen ten three seven two, thirteen ten six eight nine, thirteen ten six nine four, and thirteen ten seven zero zero, adding Sections thirteen ten six nine five and thirteen ten six nine six, and repealing Section thirteen ten six nine zero regarding short term rentals. Confirm the proposal is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and take related actions. I'll now turn this over to Mark Connolly, Principal Planner, and Fernanda Diaz-Pini, Planner Two, for the presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mark Connolly. Before mentioned, and to my right is Fernanda Diaz-Pini. And what we have presenting to you today is amendments to the county's short term rental regulations for your consideration this afternoon. The proposed amendments aim to balance the economic benefits or short term rentals with the need for neighborhood stability and housing protections. These proposed amendments are the outcome of outreach and work done by a short term ad hoc committee that was formed by the Board of Supervisors in September of twenty twenty four. That Supervisor Cummings and Koenig champion that cause. And the work has been, I would say, incredibly beneficial and tremendous in the community and for staff. So thank you for doing that. Beyond that, staff has also worked very diligently to bring these amendments and kind of get this to the point where we're ready to present it to you. So with that, no further ado, I'll turn it over to Fernanda.
Good afternoon. For today's agenda, we will go over some background of the proposed ordinance, after followed by an overview of the proposed amendments, a report back with options for a hotel overlay district, and staff recommendations. To address the housing crisis and preserve neighborhood quality of life in Santa Cruz County while balancing the economic benefits of short term rentals, the Board of Supervisors formed the Short Term Rental Ad Hoc Subcommittee on September twenty four, twenty twenty four. The Subcommittee was tasked with meeting with stakeholders and drafting revisions to the county's short term rental regulations to address issues, including but not limited to regulatory compliance, cooperation of hosting platforms, saturation of short term rentals, and tenant protections. Oh, I'm sorry. On March eleven, twenty twenty five, the Subcommittee presented their recommendations, which included directing CDI staff to process the proposed code amendments, present them to the Planning Commission for their recommendation to the board, and return to the board with a proposed ordinance to implement the amendments. Additionally, the board directed staff to report back with options for a hotel overlay district to facilitate expansion and establishments of hotels, and to ask the Planning Commission to review the impact of allowing residents to move into accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. On May twen, on May fourteen, twenty twenty five, a public hearing was held before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission took action to recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proposed ordinance to repeal the hosted and vacation rental ordinances and adopt the short term rental ordinance with modifications recommended by staff. The proposed ordinance proposes consolidation and streamlining of the hosted rent, hosted and vacation rental ordinances into the short term ordinance. And before I continue, I want to call attention that vacation rental permits were renamed as non-hosted rental permits. As a reminder, there are two types of short term rental permits. A non-hosted rental permit allows for the rental of an entire property for periods of thirty days or less. A hosted rental allows for a short term rental of bedrooms in a dwelling that is occupied by a long term resident who acts as a host. Other significant changes proposed include expansion of the scope of a hosted rental permit to allow rental of up to three bedrooms. And now properties with junior accessory dwelling units, or JADUs, would be eligible to obtain a permit, provided that the property owner or immediate family member lives on the property. Oh, I'm sorry. Keep going too fast. A limitation of one short term rental permit per person, entity, or parcel is also proposed. And starting on January first, twenty twenty six, a reduction of up to ten permits per year over a five year period within the designated areas if there are unused permits available. The proposed ordinance also includes a provision for implementation of a new county wide cap of two hundred and seventy non-hosted rental permits. Under the current code, except for the three designated areas, there is no limit on the number of non-hosted rental permits that can be issued throughout the unincorporated county. As a reminder, there are three designated areas, and they are the Live Oak Designated Area, the Sea Cliff Aptos La Selva Beach Designated Area, and the Davenport Swanton Designated Area. And the, on screen, you can see the current limits for each area. Stricter provisions within the designated areas are also proposed. A new non-hosted rental permit would not be issued if it results in another parcel being adjacent to two or to more than two parcels with permits. And concentration of short term rentals will be limited to twenty percent per block. Additionally, the cap for non-hosted permits within Salsa will be reduced to one forty seven. The proposed revisions also include a clarification of an exception zone within Salsa to explicitly state that streets and roads specified in the code are not subject to either countywide or Salsa cap or block limits. New enhanced tenant protect, tenant protections are also proposed, such that if a new short term rental permit would be, would require the eviction of an existing tenant, the applicant shall be liable to pay for the lease fee six months of the dwelling's actual rent at the time of eviction. The recommended code additions also include new hosting platform responsibilities and enforcement provisions, which will enable the county to require hosting platforms to only advertise legal or permitted short term rentals. An implementation of a short term rental hotline is also proposed. It will serve as a centralized resource for receiving and addressing complaints or inquiries related to short term rentals and ensure timely responses to neighborhood concerns and regulatory compliance. All short term rental properties would be required to display a sign that includes the county's hotline number. The proposed ordinance includes provisions allowing properties with ADUs to obtain a hosted rental permit. As a result, at the March eleventh board presentation of the proposed amendments, the board directed staff to ask the Planning Commission to review the impact of allowing residents to move into ADUs and convert the main unit into short term rentals. However, due to inconsistencies with policy BE dash two point five point two of the county's general plan and the recently adopted ADU ordinance, the provision was removed from the proposed, from the proposed. the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Fernanda. I'm going to take the slide about our hotel combining district and tell you a little bit about a very important item that was a referral from the Board. So as you're aware, and you heard a little bit about the beginning here, one of the Board of Supervisors directed staff programs was to report back with options for a hotel overlay zone or district that would facilitate the expansion or establishment of hotels, including in areas outside the USL, the urban service line, which would be very new for this county. Santa Cruz County's hotel market has shown some moderate growth, but it's characterized by an aging inventory. Nearly two thirds of the existing rooms are built in the eighties, and we're seeing limited new development overall as well. So in fact, as of May twenty twenty-five, the county had four thousand four hundred and thirty-eight hotel rooms across eighty-eight properties, but only one hundred and fifty-five rooms are currently under construction. So there's a need for modernization, and you can see with these numbers that, you know, we're kind of out of balance here. But despite the challenges and demand indicators have improved, you know, the average occupancy rose to sixty-five point five percent, and the twelve month average of daily room rate, ADR, reached one hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, which is kind of up from the pandemic lows and slightly above the pre-COVID levels. So the performance trend suggests sustained visitor interest, but also reflect capacity constraints that limit both growth and revenue potential. So to address this, the CEO's office and CDI staff have been working on this multifaceted program, and other jurisdictions are working with options that can support hotels. And we've got four sort of ideas here that we're working on. One would be a hotel combining district. This would be a zoning overlay. This would provide for streamlined permitting within that overlay zone district, or perhaps a reduced permit approval level for a hotel expansion, and allowing such expansions if they have water and sewer or wastewater services available, even if they're outside the USL. That's one way, one thing we're looking at. Another one is utilization of sort of a TOT sharing program. This would allocate a portion of future TOT revenue to offset development costs at a reduced financial risk, or fund public infrastructure directly related to a proposed hotel project. Also, another idea is implementation of an enhanced infrastructure financing district. This would be a little bit different, and community facility districts. This would offer flexible mechanisms to fund roads and sewer and upgrades to utility and extensions and things like that. The last one is looking at a specific area. It's an update to the Sea Cliff Village Plan. And this would support redevelopment in this area and address sort of aging infrastructure in that area that's needed and the community is asking for. So that's kind of the four things, and staff's going to return to the Board in sometime this fall. Soon as we're done going through the options here, we'll provide you a formal update on the recommended program and approaches. So that'll turn it back over to Fernanda to wrap up the presentation.
In closing, here's a summary of the recommended actions for this item. To conduct a public hearing to review and consider amendments to the Santa Cruz County Code, adopt resolution finding the proposed amendments are consistent with the general plan and exempt from CEQA, approve in concept the ordinance amending the county code, direct the clerk of the Board to publish and post a notice of proposed ordinance summary, and direct the clerk of the Board to schedule an ordinance for second and final adoption on August nineteen, 2025. And that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to start off by turning this over to the public to see if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this item. Thank you. Please step forward. Speak into the microphone.
Hi. My name's Marcella Hall. I'm a resident of the Live Oak District area since nineteen eighty-one. So we got here before vacation rentals were a concept. We have worked for and supported a vacation rental ordinance since that industry was started in our area about fifteen years ago, excuse me. And I'm here to support the revisions to the ordinance, especially for the centralized reporting point for handling problems. This would eliminate the problems that we've experienced living next to a virtual hotel. When we had noise problems in the middle of the night, late at night, called the number that we were told would be a valid number to call in case of problems, and to find out that the management had changed or that company was no longer in existence. Next day, we would go over and look at the sign, and the old number that we called was still posted. So having that central point, I wish we'd thought of it years ago. I think it's great. Not only would it make it easier, I think it would also enable better statistics to be accumulated on the problems that are actually caused by short term rentals. And in our experience, it's not the hosted rentals. There are a couple in our area, but it's mainly the unhosted virtual ones. Also, finally, these changes will lead to better enforcement of the codes that are already on the books. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is my first time doing this, so. My name is Gabriel Klein, and I've been a resident of the county for almost thirty years now. I'm a husband, a father. Our son's about to start at Shoreline on Thursday for the first time, and I was at elementary school for many years at several different schools in the county. In two thousand and eleven, my wife and I were able to scrape together enough money and afford to buy a house here barely, and have tried to stay in it as best we can and make the most of being able to live in this county and support that lifestyle. Since two thousand and sixteen, we have welcomed hundreds of guests into our home under the hosted rental permit, and I now help three other local permanent residents host their properties as well. So what started out as a side hustle turned into a career for me and a way that we can stay in the county. We know that the county's budget is tight, and I know that there's federal issues that we're all dealing with. That's another reason that I want to support reasonable local hosts in hosting. When primary residents offer their homes while we're away, we're generating significant TOT revenue and bringing valuable tourist dollars to the community. I want to be clear, I fully support severe limits on pure short term rentals as a means to protect housing and to assure local neighborhoods are local. Hosting platforms must also be held accountable for listing only legal rental. I also welcome reporting numbers and periodic inspections, especially tied to new permits and permit renewals. I think that strong, like responsible hosts are welcome to that. They don't want to be in the way of that. I strongly urge the county supervisors to review the proposed plan and consider some sort of a tiered structure like Los Angeles or Santa Cruz counties that they've adopted. The tiers would let primary residents focus and limit the short term vacation rentals. I also think that we should allow ADUs and JADUs to be used if they're not impacting for the people, not to rent them, but for people to live in while they're doing short term rentals if they need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, that went fast.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the audience, is there any callers who'd like to speak?
I see no speakers online.
Thank you. So now I'm going to turn it back to Board members and maybe start on my far right with Supervisor DeSerpbe.
Thank you. So this is a hearing today. Are we voting today on this? Yes, we are. Okay. Okay, so I have I have a lot of questions, and I'm sorry if I'm stealing anybody else's thunder or whatever. I know Manu and Justin worked on this together, so thank you very much. And this was a lot of work, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness going into it. You know, one of the things that I'm concerned about since taking office is sort of our our budget, our general revenue is not great. We have the lowest tax, property tax return. We're fifth from the bottom of fifty-eight states. And so to do anything, especially now, that would limit any income coming into the county, to me is a difficult thing to swallow down. Having said that, I do understand many of the reasons why the two of you wanted to make some adjustments, but I'm going to ask some questions. So do we have, do we have any idea about the loss of revenue might be to the county? Because I have the numbers about what we made for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. It looks like we received just over nine million, nine point three million dollars in payments from short term rentals on TOT, and a hotel was four point six. So with the proposed reductions in short term rentals, do we have any idea how that will impact the money that we've seen in prior years?
No, I don't think we do. We haven't done that kind of fiscal analysis for this.
Well, if I could respond, I mean, we're not actually removing anyone's permits, right? That was sort of fundamental to our approach here, is honestly to try to make this a revision, but not an overhaul as far as the permitting structure, and not to create anything where we started yanking people's permits away. We recognize that people have made substantial investments in turning these homes into vacation rentals. And believe me, there are definitely cases where I would like to at least let permits age out, you know, where there's a very high density of vacation rentals, but we did stop short of that, you know, both at county council suggestion and also because that does start to present challenges, and people have made these investments, but also because, as you point out, it's a consideration for county revenue. So I think, yeah, maybe you could make the argument that we're not going to, our transient occupancy taxes won't grow as quickly potentially as they would. Although, given the occupancy numbers, that might even be hard to justify. I mean, our latest reports from Visit Santa Cruz County show an occupancy rate down in the forties for short term rentals. I think it's like forty-six percent. So clearly enough capacity there. Hotels, it's less. It's more like we were at a seventy-five percent occupancy rate in June. So I don't see this as having a major impact on our revenues, and I certainly share that as a concern in general with you.
Okay, thank you. Because what, and this is sort of a more complex matter than than I've really been able to wrap my head around. So I'm sorry for some of these questions. But what I had heard in the presentation is that, like in my area, that there are two hundred forty-one non-hosted rentals, and that is going to be reduced to one hundred and forty-seven. And it sounds like, and I could be wrong on this, something like if the if the rental isn't used, like if they have a permit, they're going to be a reduction of ten per area per year. So that's what I'm concerned about.
That's correct.
So help me help the public too, because if I'm having a hard time and I've rewritten several times, I think the public probably needs to really understand. So as simply as possible, if you could explain, and the one thing that drives everybody crazy, including me, is when people use initials or acronyms, if you could just say what you're, you know, instead of TOT, actually say transient occupancy tax, that would be great. Thank you.
So the permit limit within the Sea Cliff Aptos La Selva Beach Designated Area, we are proposing a reduction. However, as you can see in the purple areas of what is within Salsa, there's a clarification that within those areas, there is no limit to the amount of permits that can be issued.
And those are the oceanfront properties, I'm guessing?
That have been.
Beach Drive and up on the bluff.
Correct. That have been historically used for vacation rental, short term rentals. So in one way, yes, there is a reduction. The idea behind the reduction is that currently there are about ninety-four permits that are issued within that exception zone. And if we were to then make those ninety-four permits available within Salsa, it would create a significant increase in permit availability. And so to even it out, that's where the reduction comes from. It's the current limit of two hundred and forty-one minus the ninety-four permits that exist within Salsa. So in essence, the limit within, it wouldn't be, it's not as impacted as it seems.
Okay, well, it's a significant reduction nonetheless. How many permits do we currently have on a waitlist? Do we know? Because I think I looked at it online, and it looked like forty-nine, but I have no idea. And I think we've tried to ask, and we don't have the answers yet, but I don't know where they are in the permitting process, if they've been holding for years or.
There are seventy-five folks on, there's a waitlist of seventy-five. There, a lot of it has to do with the block capacity as well.
Sure.
Since there are designated blocks, there are blocks within the designated areas, which are limited to a twenty percent capacity, so that blocks don't get overrun by vacation rentals or short term rentals permits. I can't offhand speak to how long they have been on the waitlist, unfortunately. Some may have been for a year or two.
So this is a tremendous amount of tracking, I think. So do, like, of all of, just like countywide, of all of the vacation rentals that are permitted, are we certain that they're actually using those permits and renting out?
The only time that we can check is when they submit an application for renewal. At that time, we request that they provide a history of how much the property has been used as a short term rental. There is a minimum requirement, and if the property, the permit owner does not meet that requirement, they cannot renew their permit.
Okay, so we're not really tracking how much each singular vacation rental is being, because we would.
Only every five years.
Through TOT, right? Okay. So we just don't have the capacity to track these things, or we just?
Well, each permit is issued for five years. So within that five years, the permit owner has the ability to use it to how much they would like. And then within, in that, it would, so we only check it five years, but yes, there is also staffing that would require a lot to keep tabs on. I mean, I think right now we have something along the lines of eight hundred, total of eight hundred and forty-five issued permits, and about two staff members taking care of vacation rentals, of a short term rental. So it would be a considerable strain.
Sure. That's, yeah, that's a lot of work. And then I do have a question about hosted rentals. It seems like we cap, this county caps hosted rentals, and that seems, I don't understand why. Why are we capping hosted rentals? That should be completely uncapped, in my mind. Because you're there in the house hosting somebody in your third bedroom, like, you know, this gentleman came up and talked about, like, I have a friend who's been doing this for, you know, since it began, and she hosts people all the time from Europe, and, you know, they've had such a wonderful, they've been able to, A, make ends meet, to live here in Santa Cruz, and then also had a wonderful experience hosting people. So I don't understand why we would ever cap a hosted rental.
That provision was included in, it's included in the current ordinance. I imagine that the reasoning behind it is similar to the reasoning for why we're proposing today a cap for non-hosted rentals. In this county, there is a lack of housing and. In this county, there is a lack of housing and even renting out rooms is especially important resource for folks of lower income.
I can also add to the comments I staff. Currently we haven't, I don't think we're even really close to what that cap is for hosted rentals in terms of the amount of people who are asking for those permits. And so for the subcommittee, we decided, well, let's just keep that in place. And if we get to a point where we start reaching that limit, then we can remove the cap. But given that many people aren't even seeking out permits for hosted, we didn't think that was an issue that we needed to address at this time, because it's not, it hasn't been a problem. And we're not even coming close to the cap number right now.
Okay. And then in, in this ordinance, I don't, and I could be wrong because it was very complicated. But, you know, in other counties, they have, I think it's called de minimis permitting, where, you know, people like, if like a big event is happening at Pebble Beach or Laguna Seca, they, they don't want to have a short-term rental necessarily, but potentially they want to be able to rent out their, their homes for that week or, you know, less than 20 days. Do we have anything like that in, in the current ordinance in front of us?
There is a provision that allows for a property owner to rent out their house for less than 30 days, one time a year without a permit.
Okay. So that's, that's good.
It's not.
But we're not probably capturing T O T then on, on those rentals, right?
It, because it's a one, one time off situation.
Okay. And then finally, you know, I, I do really agree with tenant protections, but I do feel like six months is a lot to ask a homeowner to pay out on, or a new owner of a house to pay somebody's six-month rental. That's, that could be quite a lot of money. Like I couldn't come up with that amount of money to pay somebody out. And maybe that's why it's in place, right? As a deterrent. But nonetheless, I feel like maybe three or four months would be more humane than six months. So. And I think that is, we're now the end of my comments.
Supervisor Cummings.
Well, first I just want to thank Supervisor Koenig and his office and staff for working with my office and our staff on this. Obviously in Santa Cruz, housing and affordable housing are the two, affordable housing is probably one of the biggest issues, like just alongside homelessness. And, and we've seen that with Santa Cruz County being designated the third most expensive rental community in the nation for the third year in a row. And, you know, when we began this, it really was in response to a lot of concerns that we're hearing from many people in the community. And we've been seeing this happening all across the state, if not all over the nation and in other parts of the world, where the intent of these short-term rentals was really to help support people who maybe are able to offer a room in their house to somebody who could, who's coming to visit. And what it's now exploded into is the commercialization of residential property, which is, you know, helping to further make housing less accessible to working class people. It's reducing the amount of housing that's on the market and is really impacting many communities throughout the world. And, you know, I think the approach that Supervisor Koenig and I took on this was one where we were really trying to compromise the, the desire to reduce short-term rentals, address some of the impacts in the community, but also understand that some of the folks who have bought these homes for these purposes have made some investments. And while I think that I personally would like to see us go further, this is a, a starting point and it's, and honestly, it's a, it was a conversation that we were able to have with the community. And I think that's partly why we don't have this room filled with opponents on either side here today flowing out into the hallway is because of the fact that we were able to reach some kind of compromise that for folks right now, we're willing to move forward with. And so I'm very supportive of all the work that's gone on, gone into this. And I really want to thank staff for all their hard work and support in this. It was not easy and took a substantial amount of time, but I think that what we've gotten to today is a first step and we can continue to refine this over time after it's been adopted. And as we watch how this plays out. And so for those reasons, I'm really supportive of what's before us today and look forward to seeing how we can, you know, obviously it's not perfect and we can continue to refine it. But I think that this is a good first step that many folks in the community are on board with.
Supervisor Koenig.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. I mean, what, what inspired me to take another look at this ordinance was, was a number of things, but probably more than anything, hearing from folks who were ready, wanted to be first-time home buyers, but found themselves continuously beat out by investors who are buying those properties and turning them into short-term rentals instead. I mean, nothing's more frustrating than bidding on a house and then losing the bid. And then three months later, you see a vacation rental sign go up. I mean, like this, that feeling like your community is eroding and there's not a spot for you is, is terrible. And so that's the fundamental thing, thing we're trying to address here. And there was just this kind of, I think, nonsensical element in our code that we have a few defined areas where there are limits and then the rest of the county, completely unchecked growth, right? I mean, you could, sky's the limit. You know, then kind of going down the list, the next thing to address is just sort of this issue of complaints. And, and we heard it today, the fact that you could call the number on the sign, not get through anyone. You could call the sheriff's office, maybe they, they, they can send a deputy out for a noise complaint. But, you know, our noise ordinance requires that a warning first. And so then the group would be warned, there would never be a violation, there would never be anything on the record. And so then these permits would come up for renewal and we basically have no record of any problems. So that was, that was another kind of lump of issues. And then I think the final thing is the fact that, you know, we were, had these uncapped, or lack of cap on unhosted rentals, but a cap on hosted rentals and trying to address this thing that people are in fact managing to stay in our community thanks to short-term rentals. Now, I think that the revisions in front of us addressed two out of three of those pretty well. Right? We were stopping the unchecked growth of vacation rentals countywide and stopping them from eroding our long-term housing stock. We created a 24/7 hotline that will be a resource for the entire community and serve as a single source of truth for issues. And actually really importantly, we've created responsibility for the hosting platforms for Airbnb and VRBO. And we said, hey, you guys are not allowed to work with unpermitted rentals. Period. Hard stop. And we can come after you if you do. So that effectively cuts off access to the entire market for unpermitted rentals. That's huge. So those are three really fundamental things that I think this ordinance is, is doing well and that I'm excited about. I do still think there's a bit of a question mark around the hosted rental piece. To Supervisor Cummings' point, we just, we didn't see it as the most urgent need to resolve because there's still capacity in the cap. You know, we've heard suggestions around creating a de minimis permit type for 20 days or less. So, I mean, I, I think that is certainly something we could consider as well as, you know, potentially removing the cap for hosted rentals. I mean, there's sort of a set of issues there to look at in, in another pass, I think. You know, one thing we'd have to do in looking at that is make sure that we don't create a loophole, right? Do we have proper enforcement to ensure that a hosted rental is in fact hosted rental and not an unhoused rental? And, you know, the wolf in sheep's clothing, so to speak. So that's why I wouldn't, I don't know if, I'm prepared to move forward with this general package of updates now and go back and look at the hosted rental options a little bit in, in more depth. You know, Supervisor Cummings' point, the, the community outreach that we did at the beginning of this process seems to have really paid off. I mean, honestly, I'm shocked that there's so few people here in the room today, as well as at the planning commission meeting and so forth. I mean, and that tells me that we must have done something right in some of the community meetings we had early on with the vacation rental managers, with the neighborhood groups and with the platform. So that's where I'm at. I do, the only thing that I caught in the ordinance that's before us today, that seems to be a bit of a misinterpretation is when we were looking at kind of the density provisions, this ordinance in 1310, 694 D4D, limitation on proximity of non-hosted rentals. It says that no new permits shall be issued if approval would cause a residentially zone parcel to be adjacent to more than two parcels with active non-hosted rental permits. The idea here is to create, to prevent someone from becoming surrounded by vacation rentals. At the same time, they're, we meet the block cap, so they can't get a vacation rental themselves. They can't sell their home because they're now surrounded. I believe our original intention was to be, to make that, that it, no new permit will be issued if adjacent to two or more, not more than two. So basically it can only be adjacent to one vacation rental. Small difference, but that way, you know, you're getting, you're preventing people from having a vacation rental either on either side of them on the block or, you know, both across from them and behind them. So that's the only change I'd suggest in the code. But otherwise I'm prepared to move forward today.
Thank you. I'm now going to proceed with my questions and comments. I just really want to start off by thanking Supervisor Cummings and Supervisor Koenig for your work on this. I think you're doing a really good job sort of striking the balance of our, the importance of, you know, T O T in our revenue streams and our tourism industry and also our affordable housing challenges in our community. So I'm really glad that you took this on because it's, it's important. And I really like, I mean, I just, there's so much in what you guys did that I really like. You know, you're cleaning up processes that were, you know, not so great for existing neighbors. You've got tenant protections, you've got the hotline, you know, you just really did good work. So, and so, you know, in, in the greater context, I really am supporting the direction that you're doing. I had some questions. There's one thing that is, I'm kind of struggling with. And it has to do with the folks who currently have a non-hosted permit, who as long as they're in good standing, it sounds like they can have their permit renewed pretty much indefinitely. And I was wondering if you, as a subcommittee, had a conversation about kind of the concentration of wealth and equity and kind of what, what's, what's, what I'm struggling with is that like the, the wealthy are going to get more wealthy and the other wealthy, because to have one of these homes, you're still, you know, you kind of, you're kind of out. And so did, how did your discussion go on that? And how did you land on where you landed?
I mean, I think this gets back to just sort of the legal defensibility of the ordinance. I mean, I sort of agree fundamentally with what you're saying. You know, the way one committee member put it to me, or I think to our subcommittee was we're kind of creating these taxi medallions, right? Where you get one and you have it forever and it's worth a ton of money. And everyone else is just kind of out of luck. And, you know, we're trying to balance that with not taking people's permits away after they've made a substantial investment in the property. So, I mean, I would also invite county council to, to comment on that. Like, I mean, could it, do we, do we think we're going to, I mean, granted, people can sue the county for anything, anytime. And we, we certainly see that, but would, do you think that we, that it's problematic to let permits simply expire after five years and say at that point, hey, you have to get back in line to renew a permit?
No, I'm not, I'm not particularly concerned about that. There, there, you know, the law of inverse condemnation is built around the expectation of property owners, you know, when they purchase a place. But if it's a regulatory taking versus a physical taking, generally a person needs to prove that all economic viability of the property has been shut down. And, and that's not taking place if we, if your board as a policy decision decides to allow a permit to exist for five years and then take it away and let other people get in line and do it. A lot of the stuff that you're engaging in right now are very policy-based, not, not constrained so much legally.
I could follow up on that. You know, I think, again, this was kind of a first pass at this. And part of what we thought is that if we grandfathered people in who are, you know, based on when they submitted their applications, that, you know, we might be able to kind of have a path forward to being, able to make some progress on making these changes. I'm not opposed to revisiting this idea of, you know, people get permits for X amount of time and then they have to give those permits up because I think that, you know, while they may not be able to use them as vacation rentals, they still could use them as long-term rentals. And as long as there's some agreement that, you know, with the tenants that it's for, you know, X amount of time and that's built into the lease, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for us to explore having shorter duration, short-term rental permits. And if it's a stipulation of the permit itself, that, you know, you can get this permit for, we're going to have, you know, let's say 100 permits where you can only use it for three years. And then after that, you have to give up your permit. I mean, I think that's another opportunity for us to have further discussion as we want to refine this. But again, this is just kind of our first step into these policies and figuring out like, what can we do based on the, the political climate that we currently have?
No, I really appreciate that. I'm glad it came up. And I think what, you know, I, I would, maybe we can ask, if you're agreeable, ask staff to look at a process where maybe it's a three to five-year permit, like a reapply. If you're in good standing, could be a lottery, you know, we don't know what demand's going to be. So this like, you know, kind of is a first pass. But that, that would feel a lot better to me because then we're, you know, folks, you know, you still get the grandfathered in and that like today, you don't have to lose your permit and, you know, reapply. But say like, in a period of time is when your permit comes back up for renewal and you're not guaranteed that you're going to be issued based on demand in the community. So it gives, I guess, other people an opportunity to, to apply and kind of share the wealth among the wealthy folks who have these homes. I agree, you know, again, it doesn't sound like the hosted rentals are in, you know, so much demand that we don't have enough permits for them today. But I do see, you know, for folks in my district that, you know, it, it may be a way to make ends meet, you know? It's the cost of living is high. We've got a lot of people kind of aging in place. They've either inherited their houses or they're there. And I really would like to continue to encourage hosted rentals if that's what helps people stay in their homes. So again, we don't have to, I don't think, cross that bridge today since there's not that demand, but I kind of want to second that concern. And then, yeah, I guess I, I'm interested from the committee, given that this is a first pass. I know we have a first reading today. You know, I think I'd be more comfortable having, you know, that change in the next first reading and then, you know, having another conversation before a second reading. However, you know, kind of what, what was your thought about the timeline of your subcommittee? Were you going to continue to meet, to clean this up? Like, you know, what, what were your thoughts since you were calling it a first pass?
I mean, I think on our end, or at least for myself, and I also want to put into the context that, you know, when this started out, we had a very different board. And so this board, there's been turnover in the board. And so trying to figure out where the previous board was at. And now, you know, and the fact that this was moving along, you know, it wasn't clear to us where the, the new board was going to be, especially given that, you know, we didn't find out until November who that new board was going to be. And so as a result, I think that, you know, we were planning on moving forward with this package of recommendations with the hopes that we would get this passed and the ordinance will be updated. And then that really opens the opportunity for any of us to work together or for an office to, you know, for a spread direction for staff to work with another supervisor if they want to make updates and changes. So I think that, you know, my intention was to really try to, along with Supervisor Koenig, especially since he has a bunch of these in his district, to kind of see where he was at and be supportive and, and try to work together to have a path forward. And I think, again, one of the big things we were trying to address in this round were communications enforcement and the fact that there was no cap on non-hosted rentals outside of the districts, the special districts. So, so there's, I mean, even after, if we have, if we pass the first reading today and the second reading, and then this gets adopted, that doesn't prevent another supervisor, group of supervisors from initiating a new process to address some of the issues that have been raised today.
Thank you for, for that. And like I said, there's so much in this that I like. I don't, I don't want to hold up the things that I like. Maybe a question for county council, is there a concern that we pass an ordinance that kind of outlines a process where folks can reapply indefinitely and then make another change? And is that a takeaway in any way that would cause a legal concern, I guess?
I, I, I don't, I don't understand the question. I'm sorry. Can you try, can you rephrase it?
Yeah. If the, the part that I'm concerned about is sort of an ordinance that grants in almost an indefinite. access to a permit for our existing permit holders. And then making that change in, say, six months because another committee comes forward with a lottery approach or a five year limit or something like that. Is it then considered a takeaway?
It's 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 the, these issues are complicated, right? And so as Supervisor um Koenig raised earlier on, um the discussion around inverse condemnation is, you know, it's a tricky issue. I I don't, I mean, I cannot guarantee the board that someone would not come and and sue us for a take because people can do that every day. They can come and sue us, right? But I'm not particularly moved or worried by the idea that someone would be able to do that because I think that that would be a significant constraint on any board's policy discretion, right, to regulate things. And it would prevent a board from adopting, you know, a a a scheme like this because they would be worried that, well, we can never unwind it again or never play with it again because we're giving people unfettered discretion to, we're locked in. So I'm I'm not particularly worried about it. If you, if you wanted, uh if the board decided today that they wanted to make some kind of changes to this and weren't prepared to adopt it today, all I would ask is that you give staff specific direction as to what you want to see in the next version. And then staff would bring that, do its best to accommodate that and then bring that on another agenda. Uh but I don't have any problem with adoption of this ordinance today uh at all if the board decides that they want to do that.
Uh one question. So I, this kind of gets back to what Planning Commission needs to review uh before it comes to the board. So I don't think we like that Planning Commission significantly discussed um the idea of renewals, right, that that Supervisor Martinez is is raising. Would, so if we wanted to include or or consider that, would we have to send this back to the Planning Commission, you know, specifically looking at the renewal question? I mean, obviously maybe with some direction before, then it would come back to us for a first read again?
I'm I'm up to bring, raise another point. So Jason, go ahead and answer.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, again, that there's a line. What is the most, most defensible, most conservative position and, you know, less from there? And so if you, if you really had concerns that you were making a big change, and I'm not hearing what the change is exactly yet, right? Like, you might want to instruct staff to bring it back to your board for more consideration and the exact language that you want to see and then decide whether that was a significant enough departure um that would warrant it going back to the Planning Commission. But it probably would be inefficient at this point for you to just give staff a concept to take to the Planning Commission and then have that whole thing come back to the board and it'd be unclear whether you even liked the language that you just sent the Planning Commission to review. So, you know, does that help?
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I have a sufficient, I think, I could certainly propose what that language would be. I mean, I think the idea was that um upon renewal or review to for a a renewal, that A, all that the current version of the ordinance applies, right? So I mean, for example, the density limits would certainly prohibit some people from getting renewed because, I mean, I could name a few spots where there's five vacation rentals in a cluster. So someone is gonna end up being ineligible upon renewal. And another one would be that upon renewal, you rather than sort of being presumed to for renewal unless there's violations, if there's a waitlist, you're now at the bottom of the waitlist rather than effectively at the top, right?
I just, I wanted Stephanie Hansen, C D S Assistant Director, I just wanted to raise one point, and that is that there there are a lot of good improvements in the ordinance, right? A lot of things that are being addressed. We've also had, this ordinance has to go to the Coastal Commission, our favorite topic of the day, it seems. Um and we we've had a lot of good coordination with them. I think, you know, we're making some good changes. They don't feel like we're overstepping boundaries. But but often, we have a big argument with them about what we can change because they want to keep um visitor accommodations available. So um because we've had lots of um coordination already, they seem to be okay. We haven't triggered anything. I would just suggest maybe we let this ordinance go through. We can always come back later on and address caps or address um uh renewals and have a, you know, more robust discussion about it. But it would be nice to let the good things that are in this ordinance move move forward since we seem to be sailing pretty smoothly into the coastal area. So I just wanted to raise that because we hadn't really talked about it yet. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I could make one other comment too, is that um you know, part of what also helped us get to where we are today is the amount of uh community outreach that had been done. And there's a lot of community awareness around the changes that we're making and public discussion with um the real estate industry, with residents about the changes we were making. And if we were to depart and and um and go to um, you know, creating limits on the amount of time people could have permits, which I'm not opposed to, I just think that that would also trigger us needing to go back to the public to have more discussion because I do think that 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 could be a very hot button issue. And we'd really want to make sure that rather than trying to, you know, push something forward today, that we have um public communication and transparency around these new um topics that we're thinking about introducing. And so I think to Ms. Hanson's point, you know, if we're able to move forward today with what's being proposed, and then we can come back and read re, we'll start that discussion around some of these other changes. Um it would allow us to actually hear from the community what their thoughts are because um I think it could really undermine a lot of the work that we've been doing to gain public trust if they think that at the last minute, we're now throwing new things in and trying to to pass the ordinance. Um so that's just one of the points I want to raise around this.
Yes, Supervisor DeSerpah.
So and I guess maybe it's just because I don't have a complete understanding of my Salsta area about how this is gonna work. Because when I see a reduction from two forty one to one forty seven, red, I mean, I have red flags and bells going off right now. I I don't know that I could support this. So I, can somebody explain to me again what this is gonna mean for my area? Or is it just that simple, like a reduction, a reduction that big?
Can I explain um just how I'm viewing it to maybe help? And and the planning staff can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, because I don't think this is gonna go over well.
So right now, there's a cap of two forty one, and I think the ninety four is just within the exclusion zone. So when they subtracted the ninety four permits for the non-hosted rentals from the two forty one, it leaves one forty seven outside the non-exclusion zone. So you have, so they're just trying to separate the two. So it seems as if there isn't really a reduction. It's just they're they're defining.
Reduction is a reduction, right?
Well, so let's talk about it in terms of the rentals that exist today. And we've got the map on our screens here, right? So um basically, the reality is that the a large, I mean, uh what, nine ninety four of the units are within the purple area, right? So there's a very high concentration. And the way that we've been counting to two forty one, the staff has been counting uh whether we're not, we're at the limit, is to include both everything in the red area and in the purple area. What Supervisor Cummings and I said was like, well, hey, it's an exclusion zone. It should be an exclusion zone. We shouldn't count the ones in the purple area at all. If 100% of the of the homes in the exclusion area want to be vacation rentals, I mean, that's what an exclusion area means. Um and so that's why we took the total number, subtracted them out from the total. And so basically, effectively, what you're gonna have here is um, I think we're we're close to, let's just say, we're at the the cap today. You're basically not gonna have new vacation rentals in the red area. And in the purple area, people, basically, if every home there wanted to become a vacation rental, they could. But no one, again, no one's gonna be having their permit revoked.
How many do I actually have in Salsta total? Is it?
Today, so there are to date um um including, so issued, there are a hundred and forty seven. Um and then there are forty nine pending um vacation rentals, applications. So the total number here is sorry, it's in my notes. Um. So uh where is, I can't find it, of course. Um so yeah, so currently, there are a hundred and forty eight um issued permits within the so, uh two hundred and twenty seven total. So that includes issued and pending permits out of the two forty one. And so there are fourteen available that will be um given to the folks who are on the waitlist. Those seventy nine folks who have been on the waitlist are going to, fourteen of them will gain the opportunity to um apply. Once, of course, then once this uh those ordinance is in place, then the number would be reduced to one uh forty seven.
Maybe I could ask a question just because because we keep coming back this idea of reducing. And I think that that's what is is an impediment for Supervisor DeSerpah. So i- if if there was two hundred and fifty vacation rental permits before this ordinance goes into effect, is there still gonna be two hundred and fifty vacation rental permits available after this ordinance goes into effect?
Oh, um so I mean, technically, it is a reduction, right? So the thing is, we were looking at the way that the whole the the two forty one was including the exclusion area. Um so in a way, it's a reduction, but and also it's allowing for unlimited amount of permits within the reduction area. So it's also an expansion.
It 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 sounds to me like they're 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 just, they're just not counting the units that are in the exclusionary zone anymore. It's more of a code cleanup than it is um than it is a um restriction on the number of vacation rental units in um in your district supervisor. But now now.
Yeah, I'm still a little confused. Yeah, maybe Steph can help me because the truth is, I haven't talked to a single constituent about any of this that that has a stake here, like, and none of my stakeholders have I had any conversations with. So that's why it's hard for.
Well, there's been certainly go to, you know, um hearings at the Planning Commission and the board. So I'm not so worried about whether the public was given opportunity here. You're really not talking about a reduction. What you're talking about is just not including the exclusion area in the cap. It means, and if you reverse that, if you included the exclusion area in the cap, you'd actually be uh potentially putting a cap in the exclusion area, which doesn't have one now. Does that make sense? It's not, to say it's a reduction is is gives the wrong picture. And we're sorry for the confusion. It's, Bernanda and I went over this many, many times. I'm like, we have to be able to explain this in a way that makes sense and it's difficult to explain. But you're not, you're not approving any reduction. You're just approving the way we count toward the caps.
Okay, thank you. I'm satisfied with that.
Thank you.
So I I appreciate the discussion. Um and I I liked where you were going, Supervisor Koenig, with like the two potential changes. Um, well, I guess it's just that the current um ordinance would apply upon renewal and that also if there's a waitlist or at the bottom of the waitlist, um. I am, I guess, a little indifferent as to whether or not we move this one forward and then add to the recommended actions, that you come back with changes to that effect. Um or if we defer approving the recommended actions today for folks to come back um with changes to that effect. Um as, you know, I heard Supervisor Cummings mention the community engagement that might be necessary um as well as um Ms. Hanson and the concern about our relationship with uh Coastal Commission. So that's where I I'm I'm can be flexible. Um I just want to ensure that there's a path forward and that, you know, we kind of agree that we're we're hoping to come back with a plan to not grandfather people in indefinitely.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that there's some really good stuff in here that was, I would actually love to see implemented sooner rather than later. And I can definitely imagine that if we expand the conversation uh to say that some people might not get a permit upon renewal, that that is going to absolutely get some people very concerned. Um and so I think that it, we should probably move forward with what we've got now. Um and then we can either, you know, continue to utilize the existing subcommittee, form a new subcommittee, whichever um the board prefers to look at. Um I think the two areas of policy rec suggested or discussed here uh by the board, which were uh the issue of renewals um and preventing indefinite renewals and um or preference in indefinite renewals. And then second, any opportunities to improve the hosted rental portion of this?
Why don't you make a motion?
Okay.
But can I, can I just say one more thing? So in Placer County, um and this goes to um what Monica's talking about, but it was a way to keep people who hold and who hold these permits and aren't activating them, so aren't using them at all. Um they require a minimum of ninety days a year of rental activity to avoid um people from blocking access for others. So I don't know if that, I mean, obviously it would need to be tracked, but that might be something that would open up more permits for people. That's, so that's just an idea to put on the table.
Have a use it or lose it type provision in the?
Yes, but it's only checked at time of renewal, of permit renewal.
Gotcha. Okay. Um. Well, I guess the one question before I make a motion is uh if we want to continue the existing subcommittee or create a new one?
I'm happy to step down. It sounds like there's some interest of other board members to potentially, you know, continue working on this ordinance. Um so I'd be happy to to step down. Um and if, you know, I think it'd be good if we could move forward with what we've accomplished today. And then if a new new subcommittee wants to start up, I think that there's a lot of ideas here that are really good around, you know, um timing of like whether people should get these indefinitely, you know, lottery. Um you have to use like minimums for for uh vacation rentals per year. And I think there's a lot of different, I mean, just looking at the various ordinances that exist out there. I think Monterey County has one that's on the Coastal Commission agenda for tomorrow that actually has some interesting aspects to it. There's some interesting aspects to some of the um, this is one of the ordinances down in New Orleans, which they've been really trying to get rid of vacation rentals. And so I think there's a lot of different models we can look at. And I'm trying to put together that recommendation right here is is definitely, um you know, we'll we should make the sausage elsewhere and and bring it back. Um so, you know, I think that if we can move forward with this and if there's a direction for a new subcommittee, I mean, it's gonna come back to for a second reading. And so we could actually think about, you know, maybe Supervisor Koenig and I can think about do we want to continue? Or we can make a recommendation at that meeting to, you know, sunset the subcommittee or folks want, if there's interest today and people want to join that subcommittee, I'm happy to step down as well.
Okay, well, I'll just take a crack at this. I'll move the recommended actions with the following revision to thirteen ten six ninety four D four D to strike the words more than two and replace them with two or more. So the section now reads, no new permits shall be issued for approval would cause a residentially zone parcel to be adjacent to two or more parcels with active non-hosted rental permits. And uh reappointing a subcommittee consisting of myself and Supervisor DeSerpah um to look at additional uh changes to this short term rental ordinance in the future, um including uh issues of renewal and hosted rental permits. And.
One second.
Sorry, that's me. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Um will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor DeSerpah.
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Martinez? Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Um now we'll be moving on to item number eleven. Um, item number eleven is to hold a Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act, TERFA, hearing for the Cabrillo College um UCSC Student Housing Project in connection with the proposed issuance of bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in the amount of a hundred and ninety million dollars and take related actions. So for this item, I'll turn it over to Peter Deflis, uh Principal Administrative Analyst for the presentation. uh, principal administrative analyst for the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. I will pass by some of my initial comments as you just said it and keep this quick for you. Um, the proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the construction improvement, equipping and equipping of student housing facilities and other related facilities at Cabrillo College pursuant to IRS code and elected body within the territorial territorial limits of the project must hold the hearing to allow the public comment on the proposed issuance of the bonds. The county has no liability for the repayment of the bonds. Um, proper notice for the hearing has been provided as required, and representatives from the financing team are available here today to answer any questions. So it's recommended that your board open a public hearing um to um and adopt the resolution.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing um and turn it over to the public to see if there's anyone who wishes to speak to this item. Seeing no one in chambers, is there anyone on Zoom?
No speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to my fellow board members to see if anybody would like to comment.
Yeah, I'll just say I'm really glad to see that this is going to be moving forward and we're going to be providing more housing for students here in Santa Cruz County. This looks like a great partnership between um UCSC and Cabrillo, and I'm just really glad that they were able to secure the money to make this project move forward. And so I'm happy to move the item. Um.
A second.
Uh, all right, motion and a second. Any other further further comments? All right, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
D'Surpa.
Aye.
And Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for being here. Um, I will now, um, as a reminder, item twelve was deleted. So the next item on the agenda is item number thirteen, to hold a public hearing to consider the proposed childcare development fee increases and take related actions. So with that, I will turn it over to Kimberly Peterson, Deputy Director um of the Human Services Department for the presentation. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi. It happened a whole many, many hours ago.
Good afternoon, uh, members of the board. Uh, my name's I'm Kimberly Peterson, uh Deputy Director with the County of Santa Cruz Human Services Department. And I'm here today to propose an increase to the childcare developer fee, uh, which is an impact on new construction or development uh to help offset the impacts of that development on the childcare system. County code requires that the fee be reviewed every five years. And so this hearing is in accordance with that existing code. For some background, the county has levied the childcare development impact fee since nineteen ninety one. At that time, there was an acknowledgement of the importance of the childcare system as an essential community service, and that there was an impact to the system from new development, which could be offset through establishing an impact fee. The funds received from the impact fees are used to provide forgivable loans to childcare providers for facility improvements that improve or augment the local childcare system. You may recall that in June, you received information from our department letting you know that the opportunity for childcare providers to apply for loans was opening up and that you could help us get the word out in your districts. That process is still underway and we'll be coming back to you in the fall with the results of that application process and to see the approval for those loans. Authorizing that next round of loans uh will be a separate item from what you're deciding today, though today's hearing is on the amount of the fee that supports our ability to provide those loans into the future. And as mentioned, county county code requires that the fee be reviewed for augmentation every five years in alignment with an impact fee study, also referred to as a nexus analysis, that determines the appropriateness of the fee and the maximum amount that the county can charge developers for that fee. The formal analysis of the childcare impact fees was presented in a report and adopted by the board during a public hearing in October twenty twenty four. And as you will see on the next slide, the fee increase proposed today is well within the maximum limits identified in that study. So what you are looking at here is the current impact fees along with the maximum impact fee that could be charged based upon the study adopted last October. And then in the far right column is the recommended fee increase proposed to you today. Within the single family dwelling rates, which is across that top row of the slide, we are proposing a five percent increase. And then in subsequent years, the rate would be based upon the constructing construction cost index, which is in line with county code. We are proposing increasing the multifamily dwelling rate gradually over the next five years. Currently, the multifamily dwelling rate is at thirty two percent of the single family dwelling rate, and we're proposing bringing it to thirty five percent of the single family dwelling rate. And then in the subsequent year to forty percent, and then by um increasing it by five percent increments for the next couple of years until it reaches fifty percent of the single family dwelling rate. Other impact fees, including childcare development impact fees in other jurisdictions, do not have such a large gap between the single family dwelling rate and the multifamily dwelling rate. And so we felt it was reasonable to gradually bring that multifamily dwelling rate up to fifty percent. I will will note there are some exemptions um for paying the fee. And one of the exemptions that exists is affordable housing projects. And I mention that because um that's something that we talk about a lot as a county in the in the board. For the non-residential impact fees, they would increase very minimally. And in future years, they would increase based on the construction cost index, again, in line with county code. In bringing these recommendations to you, we are trying to augment support for the childcare system, which is vital for families and our local economy, and also balance the need for need and cost for residential and commercial development. So with that, the recommended actions are in front of you to hear objections or protest to the fee and then to adopt a resolution confirming uh the childcare developer fees graduated increase. And with that, I will turn it back to you for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to start by going out to the public to see if there's anybody who'd like to comment on this item. Seeing no one in chambers, is there anyone on the phone?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. I'm now going to turn it over to the board to see if anybody has any questions or comments. Start on the far right again, Supervisor D'Surpa.
So this fee would be imposed uh at at the time of like getting a permit for development?
That's correct, for new construction.
Okay. Um, I know in the school district, we also have school district developer fees. So um, I know that this adds a significant cost because it it's it'll be two dollars and one cent per square foot. Oh, uh, how is it?
Thanks for asking.
Yeah.
So actually, um, I don't know if you can still see it, but I'll go try and go back on the slide. Um, the recommended fee increase is actually just five cents.
Oh, okay.
The two dollars a square foot is what we could be charging, but we are we are we are proposing something much more nominal.
Yeah, okay. But it, you know, it's still it's still hits the pocketbook of people who are attempting to either remodel their home or add square footage or ADU, et cetera. So.
Uh, so I will clarify as well that the um, if somebody is remodeling, it's if it's within the footprint of the the house or a unit, this doesn't apply. But if they're increasing their square footage, then um unless it meets another exemption, then it would would apply, just for clarification.
Thank you. And, you know, I I will say, when I was campaigning, that um, I watched a presentation with the state. The state actually came down to AAUW to make a presentation on childcare and like fifty percent of the vouchers in this county go unused. And so if there was some way we could get the word out.
Mm hmm.
Because there should be a people that are eligible for those childcare slots, and we shouldn't have them going unused.
Yeah.
That's just a sidebar.
Yeah. Um, I do think that uh there's one other thing I wish I I intended to share during my presentation, and that is in relation to the fee, um, an interesting um anecdote for something that you don't usually expect for people paying fees, is that um in the last year, uh, we received an inquiry um that was by somebody who was, I'm not sure if they were building a new um childcare family home, multifamily dwelling, single residential home or remodeling and expanding, though they were questioning what the childcare development fee was on their their permit. And so the question was forwarded to us, and we explained what the money is used for. It's to support childcare providers with facility improvements and ultimately hopefully expand the supply of childcare. And the person actually wrote back um stating, oh, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. This is a fee I feel really good about paying. And so I just, I wasn't, it was something nice to hear. So I will pass that along.
Supervisor Cummings.
Thank you, Chair. Um, actually, Supervisor D'Surpa actually just called something out that brought a question to mind, which is, I mean, we see single family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, office hotel, et cetera. Do these fees actually apply to ADUs? Or are ADUs exempt from these kinds of fees?
I think there's a certain type that's exempt by, we need to um pause and check if you just can give me a moment. I believe it's ADUs under a certain that are under a certain size. So um, any any addition of less than seventy square feet to an existing, let's see. Actually, and from what I see, I'll defer, I don't I don't know if the if county council is anything different, but from what I see, actually, it does not look like ADUs are currently exempt in the in the um code.
And I just don't have an answer to that question. I mean, I would need to take a look at the code and 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 study it and look at it. If it's important to you to make a decision today, that would weigh in on you on whatever motion is made.
It's it's not important for today. Just, you know, I was just looking at what's listed on here and didn't see ADUs. And so with all the incentives for people to start constructing ADUs, was just curious whether or not this was a fee that was that would apply to ADU construction as well. And I guess that's a, you know, a question, you know, if we implied applied those fees to ADUs, that could drive up the cost of building an ADU. Um, and so another another conversation for another day.
If it's helpful, I just looked it up. It's um anything under seventy square feet, which some ADUs would fall into that small space. But there's affordable housing exemptions that I think planning would evaluate the ADU's purpose. So all of that helps.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, I just, yeah, really appreciate the work. I know that we're going to revisit this. It sounds like there's a broader fee schedule study that's happening. And so this is just a first step. And then next year, we'll probably have another discussion on this as we look at some of the fees across the board. And so um, yeah, I just want to express our support in having staff bring this forward, especially because, you know, we really do need to be investing in childcare in our county. And I know that in the um, yeah, I know that, you know, last year, when we had our core process, we didn't really have, we did, I think childcare was was excluded in terms of the programs they got funding. And this obviously is helping to support the infrastructure. And I think to Supervisor D'Surpa's point with um some of the vouchers not being used, you know, really is an opportunity for us to start thinking about, you know, how we can best support childcare, what opportunities there are out there currently that maybe we're not taking advantage of, and then just seeing how moving forward, we can better help assist um childcare operators. And so just want to appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I get.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Koenig.
Thanks. Um, thanks for the presentation. In general, uh, I am a little bit dubious about fees at this point because, I mean, cost housing is already so expensive, the cost of construction has skyrocketed skyrocketed. And so, of course, while I support uh better childcare, I'm not sure that this is really the best way to fund it anymore. That said, the rate increase you proposed is so minor that I'm comfortable approving it today. If you come back and ask for the maximum uh rate we could ask for, I I think I would have to vote against it. But I mean, we're talking about about what, four to five percent here seems totally fine. So happy to support. In fact, I think.
Need a motion.
Yeah, I'm happy happy to move the staff recommendations.
There's a second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Um, and I just want to thank you for your presentation and your good work on this. Um, with that, I will um inner or ask the clerk to call roll.
Supervisor D'Surpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
And Martinez. Aye. Motion passes, and that's the final item on our agenda today. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting at three fifty four. Thank you.